Good evening, everyone. The in-person Board of Education meeting is going to come to order. I just want to say hello, everyone. It's nice to see you. We will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you ladies please start us? Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome, everyone. Mr. Gorski, I believe you have a roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Tofano.
Here.
Mrs. Kirby.
Here.
Ms. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Rutske.
Here.
Mr. Pelori.
I'm here.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Ms. Bierman.
Here.
Ms. Belko.
Here.
Madam Board President.
I am here.
You have a quorum present this evening?
Okay.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted June 11th, 2021 at all schools on the district website at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW.MONRO.K12.NJ.us, The Home News Tribune, The Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to make a short statement regarding our in-person meeting. We are grateful once again to be in person to see everyone. There has been some questions about whether we should still, and I believe we are still, we are live taping.
We are live streaming.
Okay, so live streaming, there you go. So everybody can see us at home if they choose, but the question came up, if we are still live streaming, why can't people call in from remote and ask questions? And also, will we be reading correspondence? The, during COVID, the local finance notice, it was L, if you want to write this down so people can look it up, this is a government, it's the Department of Community Affairs, it's the Division of Local Government Services, put out a information as to how we were to behave during remote meetings. And that is LFN 2020-21. And it basically gave us provisions for how we would have to conduct transparency and open public meetings during the pandemic. So this is basically, the government entities and Boards of Education throughout New Jersey to hold public meetings remotely. Due to the restrictions necessitated by COVID-19, the Division of Local Government Services issued remote meeting guidance in March for local government entities, including the conduct of public meetings, and et cetera, et cetera. It's a whole host of rules and guidelines for us. And it basically talks about when we are under an emergency, and it talks about because we were acting remotely. Now, however, because we are in person, we're going to have to make adjustments. Personally, I would like everyone, in an effort of transparency, if people want to call in, if people want to write in, that would be fine with me, but the pragmatic and maybe the reality of that, maybe we would go to three o'clock in the morning every meeting. So I think the Board will have to discuss that in policy, and we'll discuss it with the administration. This is in no way trying to restrict anyone from participating in our government. I fully embrace the democratic process, and so do our Board members, but in order to serve transparency, we also have to be realistic. So we haven't really decided how that's going to work, but for tonight, we have decided, and the administration has recommended, that we invite people during public forum to come to the podium. And if people want to correspond and send in letters to the Board, we will consider announcing those in the future. But right now, we're going to stick with back to in-person meetings and how we've done it. But at least we're live streaming now, so that's an improvement as well. Okay? We'll begin now. Thank you, thank you for listening to that. All right, so we have approval of the minutes next, Mr. Gorski?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the first Public Board of Education meeting, April 26th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Are you going to take a roll call? Would you prefer a roll call?
All in favor is fine for these.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone recusing themselves or abstaining? Anyone who wants to make any additions or changes? No? I believe that's passed. How about closed session minutes, April 22nd, April 26th, 2020?
Motion.
Twenty-one.
I'm sorry, 2021.
Motion.
Okay, Ken, and Mr. Tofano, and then Ken?
That's fine.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone object? Recuse, change, anything? No? Okay. Mr. Gorski, I think we have approval.
Yes, ma'am.
How about the Public Board of Education meeting on May 10th, 2021?
So moved.
Mr. Pelori.
Seconded.
And seconded by Mr. Tofano. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any recusals, abstentions, changes, or objections? Seeing none, sir?
Yes.
Okay. And closed session meeting, May 10th, 2021. So moved by Karen? Second?
I'll second.
There you go. Mr. Rutske is seconded. Any, in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any recusals, objections, or abstentions? Okay. None, Mr. Gorski, so we are passed. Thank you. And our next order of business are our students. Hello! It's nice to see you. And Ms. Jane, you're not going to be muted this time. So we're going to ask you to give your reports, and we welcome you. If you want to take your masks off while you're speaking, I think we can allow that. Go ahead. If you're not uncomfortable, certainly do not. There you go.
Okay. At Applegarth this month, they had their Moving Up ceremonies on the 10th and 11th for the fifth grade students. Their music teachers held virtual concerts for beginning and advanced bands, and they were recognized on Character.org and given the Promising Practice Award for diverse universe activity this spring. The middle school had their sixth grade orientation on the 9th and their eighth grade dance on June 11th, and yesterday, they held their two graduation ceremonies for the eighth graders. Here at the high school, senior prom was held May 21st at the Grand Marquis, and junior prom was June 4th at the high school. Senior awards were given out and announced in a video on June 3rd, and graduation is next Monday at the Care Insurance Arena.
So, actually, does that mean you will not be here after tonight's meeting? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I would just like to indulge, if you would indulge us, would you like to say anything about your year this year? And then I promised you I would say something about you.
How wonderful it is.
It was a great year, honestly. I, going back into hybrid school, was really fun to see all my teachers, and I had a great senior year. I wouldn't change it.
Good. And I'd like to point out that you are a musician, and we had the great honor of having an open-air musical concert, and Ms. Craver got an award. Could you tell us about that a little bit? I think you deserve some time on the mic tonight.
I got the National Marching Band Award from my music director for my position as morale officer this year in the marching band. I never felt more honored to get it from her. She said she wouldn't have chosen anyone else to give it to.
There we go. Do you want to do that now?
Sure.
Certainly. Dr. Alvik has a surprise for all of us. It is such a pleasure, I am talentless when it comes to music and many other things, art. It is such a pleasure to listen to the students in Monroe play. It's a great program, and they are very, very talented, and I learned how difficult it must be to be in an orchestra and to have these young age, really, young adults playing so well together. It is, it's amazing, and it's, I'm very grateful for the community to support our arts and music programs. So thank you to all our taxpayers and supporters of that. The talent is extraordinary. Go ahead, okay.
So Kaylee, in honor of your last board meeting with us this year, we have a certificate of appreciation to present to you. In sincere appreciation for your dedicated service to the students and schools of Monroe Township while serving as a student Board Member of the Monroe Township Board of Education from 2019 to 2021. Congratulations.
Next, Ms. Jane?
So at Oak Tree, the students read over 160,000 books, and because they surpassed both their goals set for them, Miss Dintmore will be leading a parade of fires through several neighborhoods on June 18th to thank them for their hard work. Tomorrow, there will be a kindergarten parade send-off where parents drive by with their children to wave goodbye to their teachers, and their fourth grade classes participated in annual science fair. At Woodland, the fourth grade class participated in animal science fair with many projects created at home and brought in and presented to their classes. The fifth graders participated in their Moving Up ceremony, which was held outside, and each class was able to receive their diploma and celebrate moving on to the middle school. This week, Woodland also celebrated a spirit week where they all showed spirit by dressing up each day for a different theme. At Barclaybrook and Brookside, they celebrated their fifth graders moving up onto the middle school with a traditional Moving Up ceremony at Brookside. The Barclaybrook/Brookside PTA planned a celebration at Eagles Landing Day Camp for their fifth graders, which was held last Friday, the 11th. And just like many of the other elementary schools, they had a virtual field day last Tuesday on June 8th, where students had activities and events to do in the afternoon sessions.
Thank you. Would you like to give us a little insight into your year and that of your classmates?
I thought it was, it was a different experience. I think having it virtual, I can't say it was a good experience or a bad experience, it was an experience. But I mean, I think it was...
That's a truism.
I think it was good to get a feel for like the online classes, which is something that we'll be experiencing in college, too. So, yeah, it was interesting.
Well, thank you both. Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Alvik? Okay. It is your turn.
Mr. Minio, Mr. Gorski, Dr. Lehman, you want to join me up front?
Okay.
For our...
Thank you.
As we do every year, in June, we celebrate our retired students. Are there anyone who is retired from our district since last September through this September? Okay, so there's people who are still working, and there's people who have moved on from us. You can have the PowerPoint. But I do want to thank the administrative team for helping to put this together. And we weren't sure whether we were going to be virtual or in person in time, so we made sure we were ready for it. We had quite a few retired people this year. If they're here this evening and they told us that we were going to be here, I'd have their class. I don't have their class if you didn't tell us that we were going to be here, so if I don't have your group, you will have to leave. All right, we're starting with middle school paraprofessional Rochelle Zoolen. So Rochelle has been passionate about herself, keeping her children. She's a Monroe resident, she's an avid teacher and a frequent library visitor, and she donated publics to Monroe, Monroe Library, Kuduro, etc. in Monroe Library. Ms. Jones Azulin, great new teacher at Barclaybrook. Mrs. Azulin spent over forty-six years recruiting lives with second grade students at Barclaybrook School. She has attended Barclaybrook School as a student. In total, oh, thank you.
In total, Mrs. Azulin has attended Barclaybrook School for over 55 years. She is incredibly dedicated to helping the students flourish. I always get it. And was recognized as Teacher of the Year in 1992. In addition to being a phenomenal teacher, Mrs. Azulin is also an incredible baker, and the Barclaybrook staff greatly misses her delicious treats. So best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement. You're going to be missed. So each of the resolutions reads, whereas the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, has been apprised of the retirement of Jones Azulin, teacher of Grade Two at Barclaybrook School, be it resolved by the Board of Education, that said Board of Education, which is to acknowledge its appreciation for the service rendered to the students and citizens of Monroe Township. Whereas it is desired to express recognition for the many years of faithful service, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education, hereby expresses its warm appreciation and heartfelt thanks for the dedicated and faithful service and the performance of her duties, and of the integrity with which she carried out her responsibilities and regrets the loss of such a respected employee. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this Board of Education, and that a copy of it be given to Jones Azulin, passed unanimously by the Township of Monroe at its regular meeting, June 16th. Next on our list, and I can't see this, so I'm going to move over here. So Nancy Mitresak, Director of Food Services, began her tenure in 1983 and served for 37 years. She was awarded for her pioneering work with the American Heart Association for her Healthy Meals Initiative, recognized for her trailblazing work creating computerized accounting and state-required forms when computers were just in their infancy in the 1980s. She was recognized by the Secretary of Agriculture, who paid a visit to Monroe Township to meet Nancy and praise and tour the outstanding Monroe Township Child Nutrition Program. NIEC ranked the Monroe Township School Food Service Program in the top 100 school food service programs in America, coming in at number six, and number two in the state of New Jersey. She ran a self-supporting program and received numerous financial achievement awards. She maintained one of the highest student participation rates in New Jersey. It's Nancy Mitresak. Mr. Philip Colo, the head custodian at Monroe Township High School. He's worked at three different schools in Monroe over his nine years in the district, and he has over 20 years of service to school districts in New Jersey. We wish him a wonderful retirement. Ms. Alice Hansen. Alice began her career in the Monroe Township Board of Ed Office in 2007 and worked as the Personnel Secretary and Purchasing Secretary before joining Barclaybrook in 2014 as the Principal Secretary. She was named the Educational Support Staff of the Year in 2016. In addition to her strong organizational skills and attention to detail, her warm personality made her the perfect match for the Barclaybrook main office. She made all students, families, staff, and visitors feel welcome. Alice's sense of humor and love of a celebration brighten the days of everyone at Barclaybrook. Best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement, Alice. Mr. Greg Byer, Supervisor of Athletics, PE, and Health. Thirty-four years of service to the Monroe Township School District. He was a teacher of physical education, an athletic trainer, soccer coach, and baseball coach. In 2010, he was named Teacher of the Year at the high school, and in 2011, he became the Athletic Director and District Supervisor for Health and PE. During his time in Monroe Township, the Monroe Township High School sports program won 48 division or district titles, 10 GMC conference titles, five sectional state championships, two group state championships, three state championships, and four national championships. He is certainly missed. Ms. Leslie Bagley, she's a paraprofessional at our high school. She worked in the Monroe schools for 12 years as a special education paraprofessionals for the 18 to 21-year-old program at the high school. She's created a loving, caring environment inside the classroom and throughout the community through different transition programs. Ms. Deborah Conklin, social worker. She's worked for 17 dedicated years as the senior social worker for the district. She brought a depth of knowledge and was a calm presence in challenging situations. Deb was extremely dedicated to her job and always willing to lend a hand to everyone, and she was always able to make the parents feel heard and understood, and she will be greatly missed. Ms. Deb Stapinski, business teacher at the high school. Twenty-six years of service to the Monroe Township High School and Middle School. She began and fostered a now nationally recognized DECA program at the Monroe Township High School. She also began the sports marketing program at MTHS, and she loves Bruce Springsteen. Congratulations, Deb. Ms. Mariana Kabanska, she's the lead custodian at Mill Lake School. She gave 22 years of dedicated service primarily at Mill Lake School. She took great pride in contributing to a clean and safe learning environment for the students to thrive in, and she also took great pride in knowing that the students and staff's names, and was always willing to go the extra mile. So she will be missed at Mill Lake School. Mr. Anthony Cole, he is the maintenance mechanic, one of our maintenance mechanics for the district. Tony gave 26 years of dedicated service to the district. He's a master carpenter, and his high level of craftsmanship can be seen in many projects completed throughout the district, such as the renovation of the 1936 building and restoration of the millwork at Applegarth School, interior classrooms that he constructed at several of the schools as the district dealt with the student growth, and above all, he was a friend to all that he encountered and took great pride in helping to create and maintain exceptional learning environments. Ms. Mary Ann Morelli, purchasing coordinator, Mecca Office Clerk, paraprofessional substitute. Over 12 years of service to the district in all of those positions. She contributed to the unblemished audits of the business office and facilitated students and staff in various roles in the district. She is certainly missed at central office. Mr. James Simmons, maintenance mechanic. Thirteen years of dedicated service to the district. He's a longtime Monroe resident whose children enjoyed the Monroe school system. He had an extremely successful and storied career in the industrial trucking, transportation, and maintenance fields prior to joining the Monroe Facilities Department. He brought an incredible work ethic and mechanical skills and abilities that are the envy of districts throughout the state. He graciously trained and provided a wealth of knowledge to the next generation of facilities department mechanics. Thanks, James. Ms. Christina Basile, special education teacher, Monroe Township High School, AKA Ms. Monroe or the Birthday Queen. Teacher of the Year in 2020 and 21. Twenty years of service to the Monroe community, teaching history, language, arts, Spanish, and as an SLE teacher. Most recently, she's worked as a transition specialist preparing her special education population for life after high school. Congratulations, Christina. Ms. Susanna Sullivan, she spent the earlier part of her career at elementary level before embarking on the challenge of middle school. Language arts teacher at Monroe Township Middle School. She was original staff member at Applegarth Middle School, part of one of the first original groups of avid teachers to be trained in the middle school program. She was part of the site team for the eighth grade for Team Spectrum. Then she was an avid teacher in the sixth grade for Team Vista. She joined the LAP group as a seventh grade reading interventionist for her last two years of her educational career in our district, and she will be missed at the middle school. Ms. Natalie Michael, she began her career in Monroe Township in 2003 as a Grade Four teacher at Woodland School. She taught fourth grade throughout her time in Monroe. She taught various workshops for 12 years, including ELA, Readers and Writers Workshop, and served on various committees throughout the years. She will be missed. Ms. Nancy Mills, Grade Four teacher at Brookside School. She was the Brookside Teacher of the Year in 2014. She was the Brookside Science Resource Personnel for Grade Four. She is a collaborative fourth grade team member, helping to plan activities such as the Colonial Carousel, Career Day, Egg Drop Challenge. She has been a member of the Whole Child Wellness Wednesday Committee, and she is beloved, absolutely, by her students, parents, and her colleagues. Ms. Judy Firestein, special education teacher at Monroe Township Middle School. She was the Teacher of the Year at Applegarth Middle School in 2002, 2003. Again, one of the original Applegarthonians. I just heard that recently, as a... Who has dedicated her career to special needs students in Monroe Township. She is a compassionate detention monaster and is a proud mother of four boys. Congratulations, Judy. Ms. Kathy Listenge, school nurse at Monroe Township High School. We thank her for her 19 years of service to the students and staff of Monroe. She's been a registered nurse for 36 years, and she looks forward to spending time with her new and first grandchild, Sonny Wynn. Ms. Cindy Hills, Grade Four teacher at Applegarth School. She was the Teacher of the Year at Brookside School in 2005. She is one of our cluster teachers. She's well-known for her annual Famous American presentations. She's originated the school gardens at Brookside and Oak Tree School. She also originated the recycling pays programs at Brookside, Oak Tree, and Applegarth Schools. The proceeds were donated to fund various needs at these schools. She's beloved by students and families, and we will miss her. Ms. Loriann Layly, Secretary at Oak Tree School. L is for loyal and loving. O is for Oak Tree loves and misses you. R is for responsible and respectful. I is for incredible and intelligent, and your Oak Tree family wishes you a lifetime of happiness. Ms. Vern Lebros, Secretary at the Monroe Township Middle School. She was also the media specialist at Barclaybrook School and Applegarth School. She loves people and shows it with her smile. She always has a Diet Coke in her hand and is willing to share. She's always lending a helping hand with her smile. She's a New Yorker at heart who loved the bright lights in Big City. Mr. John B., maintenance mechanic. John gave a decade of dedicated service at the middle school. He grew up in Monroe and attended the Monroe schools. He's had an extensive career in industrial maintenance and construction and joined the district when the former high school was being converted to the middle school. He was instrumental in this transition and maintaining a quality learning environment at the middle school. Mr. James Hunt, social studies teacher at Monroe Township High School, taught for 26 years in Monroe Township. He was also a head coach for the Monroe football and assistant on more than one occasion. Looking forward to becoming a grandfather for the first time. Ms. Deb DeBoer, special education teacher and department coordinator at the Monroe Township High School, began her career in Monroe in 1993. She's most proud of being a Monroe family with two boys, Derek and Brandt, both Monroe Township High School products, and both went on to the Naval Academy. She's looking forward to spending time outdoors and visiting with her four grandchildren in Italy and Texas. Deb. Ms. Sue Romano. Payroll Coordinator. Sue began her career with the district in 2002 as a school paraprofessional. In 2006, she transferred to the business office and the accounts payable department, until 2011, where she split her day between accounts payable and the payroll department. In 2017, she became a full-time payroll coordinator. She will be missed at the board office. And that's our retirees, so congratulations to all of you.
Dr. Alvek, you have another presentation?
Mr. Teix, once we bring that up, we'll just have to kind of scroll through. So every school district in New Jersey right now who is receiving the ARPSR funds, this is the American Rescue Plan funds, is required to put together a reopening, actually what we're calling it is a Safe Return to In-Person Instruction Plan that has to be submitted to the state by June 24th. Part of the requirement of this plan is that we have to have, have to present it to the community, and the community is offered time to give feedback to the school district. This is the first draft of this plan. We expect it to go through multiple revisions through the summer as guidance is updated, and now the pandemic, the, yeah. The emergency is over, according to Governor Murphy, in the next few weeks. So one of the things we did was we reviewed the plan with each of our school restart teams over the last couple of weeks. And then last Friday, we also met with our district restart team to go over this. Now, the, what I'm going to present to you this evening is very brief because we are only allowed 1,000 characters under each section. Not even 1,000 words. 1,000 characters, which is very difficult to put into plan. So they're not expecting a full in-depth plan. They're just expecting a quick overview at this time. But as I said, it will probably be revised quite a few times over the summer before we have the reopening. So there are several sections that we had to go through. So scroll down to A. All right, so the first one, the first section is maintaining health and safety. So this is the health and safety piece that all districts need to report. So the first one is the universal and correct wearing of masks. So our plan will state all district schools will continue to follow DOH, that's the Department of Health, CDC, NJDOE, Guidelines and Executive Orders regarding the wearing of masks. District protocols will be revised as guidance is updated. If masks are optional per executive order, the district will make masks optional. The school will provide a face covering if requested. Students and staff who wish to continue to wear face coverings in all settings may do so. If masks are optional in September, teachers can layer acceptance of the mask, no mask choice, into their lessons classroom community building. If masks are mandated for all in September, the health office will provide reminders to students, teachers, parents about safe mask-wearing practices, and procedures for exemptions will be followed. In any classroom without air conditioning, students and staff may remove their face coverings in instances of extreme heat when students are socially distanced or behind barriers. When students and staff are transitioning throughout the classroom or hallways, face coverings should be worn. Face coverings on school buses will be optional. And again, this is the first draft. We do expect some changes to come from this. Letter B is the physical distancing. All district schools will continue to follow DOH and NJDOE guidelines and executive orders regarding social distancing and will update if guidance changes. Physical distancing will be maintained at all times as feasible. In rooms where physical distancing, recommended by the DOH and CDC and NJDOE, would be impractical, plexiglass dividers or other barriers will be provided. Other procedures include arranging desks in rows, all forward-facing, maintaining the required distance between. When the CDC, when the guidelines for CDC and DOH distancing standards cannot be met, barriers will be used. Reminding students and staff of distancing protocols through daily messages and signage. It may not be feasible, depending on the needs of an individual child, to adhere both to distancing guidelines and the criteria outlined in a specific IEP. Attempts to meet physical distancing guidelines should meet the needs of the individual child and may require creative solutions, often on a case-by-case basis. Letter C. Handwashing and respiratory etiquette. Handwashing stations with 60% alcohol hand sanitizers are located in each classroom, at entrances and exits of buildings, and in the cafeteria. Children ages five and younger will be supervised when using hand sanitizer. Students are required to wash hands for at least 20 seconds at regular intervals during the school day and always before and after eating, before and after using the bathroom, and after blowing their nose, coughing, and/or sneezing. If washing with soap and water is not possible, hand sanitizer should be used. Signage is prominent throughout the buildings to remind students of the handwashing protocol, and teachers will reinforce the proper protocol of handwashing after coughing or sneezing. If handwashing is not immediately available, students will be instructed to use classroom hand sanitizer. Students will be instructed to sneeze or cough into their elbow, and if a student or staff member is sick, they should stay home. Letter D. Cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, including improving ventilation. All schools have adequate ventilation, including operational heating and ventilation systems where appropriate. Recirculated air must have a fresh air component. Windows will be opened, if practical, if air conditioning is not provided, and filters for AC units must be maintained and changed according to manufacturer recommendations. The district will continue to monitor and follow all DOH and DOE guidelines for facilities. Letter E. Is contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine. All schools have isolation spaces. Symptomatic students will remain in isolation with supervision until picked up by an authorized adult. All schools will follow current DOH guidance for illness reporting, contact tracing, quarantining, and readmittance. Methods to assist in contact tracing include class lists, assigned staff, schedules, and daily attendance. Upon learning of a positive case, the school nurse will relay that to district administration, who communicates with Department of Health. The school nurse with the Department of Health and school principal will contact trace and notify close contacts. District-wide notifications will be shared when positive cases are identified. Notifications will not include identifying information and will be consistent with privacy laws. All protocols will be reviewed regularly to ensure they follow updated guidance. Students and staff will follow current DOH guidelines based on COVID-19 test results and vaccination status. Diagnostic and screening testing. All schools promote behaviors that reduce the spread of COVID-19, such as encouraging staff and students to stay home when appropriate, encouraging the practice of hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, requiring the use of face coverings and signs and messages in and around the school building. Screening questions will be reviewed daily by all staff and parents. Students will sanitize their hands when entering the classroom and as appropriate throughout the day. Letter G. Efforts to provide vaccination to educators, other staff, and students if eligible. Staff has been provided information of various opportunities for vaccinations organized by district administration. The district will continue, will communicate vaccination opportunities to all eligible persons. And letter H. Appropriate accommodations for children with disabilities with respect to the health and safety policies. It may not be feasible, depending on the needs of an individual child, to adhere both to distancing guidelines and the criteria outlined in a specific IEP. Attempts to meet physical distancing guidelines should meet the needs of the individual child and may require creative solutions, often on a case-by-case basis. The district will provide educators of students with special needs appropriate professional development to best utilize the accessibility features and accommodation tools made available through technology-based formats. The district will continue to ensure students receive individualized supports that meet the requirements of the IEP and 504 plans. The district will continue to educate our special education students based on each child's IEP. We will deliver related services in person. Students' medical health situation should go through the health office first and foremost for consideration to implement a health plan or 504 if there is an educational impact. That's the first section. The second section is ensuring continuity of services. And again, it's a 1,000-character limit. So there was a lot of information to try and fit into 1,000 characters. For the 2021, 2022 school year, Monroe Township School District will engage in a full-day pre-COVID-19 academic schedule for grades one through 12. Excuse me, kindergarten, pre-K classes, and specific special education classes will also return to their pre-COVID academic schedules. Academic assessments, including but not limited to NWEA MAP, DRA, and running records, will be administered in fall 2021 to identify academic needs. The Panorama Social Emotional Needs Survey will also be administered to students in grades four through 12. These academic and social-emotional surveys have been given prior, during, and will be given post-COVID-19, allowing for academic and program developments to meet students' needs. The district is developing a social-emotional learning reentry plan for fall 2021. As a part of this plan, each school will have an SEL team consisting of staff within the building. Each team will function throughout the school year, monitoring and planning supports for students and staff specific to the needs within each school building. Staff will engage in social-emotional learning activities and training, focusing on both supporting students in their return to school as well as staff self-care and needs. And as I mentioned at the beginning of this, one of our requirements of this plan is public comment. So the last section is just a quick overview of what we've done so far. All school restart teams met during the week of June 7th. Teams consist of administration, parents, and staff. The district restart team met on June 11th. Team consists of administration, parents, staff, Board of Ed members, representatives from each bargaining group, including MTEA and MTBOESS. Presentation at the board meeting this evening and the public forum is available for public comment. Since it's on the agenda, it can be discussed at the first public forum. The presentation will be available on the district website and will be shared with all school families on June 18th. So it will be sent out to the families in the Friday update. And that's all we have.
Okay, if any board members have any questions at this time, we'll have, when we have the public forum, the public will be, you know, be able to ask some questions. Does anyone have a question? Ms. Skirby?
Yes, I have a question, Dr. Alvek. I was a member of that restart committee, and we did talk a lot about the masks and the exception that is in the governor's orders. And one of the things that we discussed was that in there it says that you do not have to wear a mask if it inhibits an individual's health. We had a lengthy discussion at the committee about that, and we discussed how we, as a district, have been implementing that and that in the governor's orders, it is not required that you have to have medical documentation, and it's not required that the nurses have to determine who is allowed to and who is allowed to say that it is inhibiting their health. Therefore, the committee talked at length, and it seems to be in agreement that in September, we would add in this plan that the decision of whether it inhibits an individual's health can be determined by the individual or the parent or guardian. I don't see that included in the plan, and I'm curious as to why.
Yeah, it will be updated if we get new guidance. But right now, the guidance, the guidance that I'm following is based on our attorney information because I asked for attorney advice on this, and that's what we're following right now.
Well, the guidance does say, though, that if it inhibits an individual's health, it's left up to the districts to decide how to implement that. We're implementing that requiring medical documentation.
And districts are allowed to go above what's required?
Districts are allowed to, but the consensus of the committee, I mean, Ms. Belko was there as well. The consensus of the committee was to remove that, am I correct?
You're correct, yes.
So, I mean, we spent a lot of time discussing this. There were administrators there, they were asked if they disagreed with that, they did not. It seemed that the parents on the committee all agreed with, it sounded like it was a consensus of the committee, and I don't understand why we're not including that. Why have committees and ask us for a consensus and to recommend something when you're not going to follow what the committee is doing?
Take that under advisement, but that's what we have right now. But again, it's going to change.
So can you explain the comparison between this document and the restart recovery plan, which we were required by the state? Now, this is different, this is the federal government? Or this was also?
No, this is from the state.
Okay.
This is also from the state, this is so that we can get our funding.
Okay, so we'll follow these guidelines specifically for funding, but also?
This will then have to update that.
Right.
Yes.
So that was my next question, so that will be updated and put into this, and then we are going to, I guess, have that conversation continually and see what happens on that.
Yes.
With the restart recovery plan. I thought that could, would, I mean, by the time we get to September, this might change, this document?
Sure, it will change. By next week, it may change.
Okay, so by the time we get to September, or when we start bringing our parents and children back in, either for orientation or something else, could each school office have one of these, the updated one? I mean, not this one?
It'll also be on the website. We always, everything that we've done, everything that we've presented goes on the website.
But it probably should be in each school so people can refer to it. So if we can put one of these in each school as it, when it gets updated, and then, of course, restart recovery plan. Did you want to say something?
I have a question for Dr. Alvek about the plans for the next restart committee. When is that, school's going to be out as of Monday? So I was wondering, when do we plan on continuing those meetings or?
Well, I think the plan for that was to meet monthly.
So we still, through the summer, we'll still be meeting monthly?
Anyone else, yes?
I just would like, I just would like an answer to what, I was just curious too to that. If, why are we having committees and input from the public, and then we don't follow what the committees and the public are recommending that they want? I would like an answer to that question.
Well, it's not about not following what the committee wants. It's also about making sure that we're following the executive orders. And I know the way that some of the committee members read the executive order, but that's why I went to our board attorney to get what the, what their recommendation was, the way they read it.
Do you want to comment on that, Mr. Gegliardi?
Sure, well, I'm not the one that had the conversation, but the decision about whether or not to require medical documentation of any condition that would make wearing a mask hazardous or negatively impact someone's health, ultimately, I think, is going to be left to the Board of Education. That executive order guidance that we're talking about is very vague. So what you are required to do is to yield to a medical condition that would prevent someone from wearing a mask. The open-ended question, I think, ultimately is going to be, do you accept people's word for it? Do you require proof? And if you require proof, what does that have to be? That has not been definitively decided by the governor's office. So I think, as the superintendent was saying, that's ultimately going to be a decision left to the Board of Education sometime between now and September, because this has caused a lot of confusion. You'll probably get more guidance than you have right now, but I would be surprised if the state of New Jersey dictated exactly what kind of proof you have to consider. So at some point, between now and Labor Day, you're going to get whatever other guidance is going to come out of Trenton, and my expectation is that the Board of Education will have to decide the nature of the proof that's required.
Yes, Ms. Beerman.
But meanwhile, we have a population of students that are going to be in the building during the summer, a larger-than-usual population with the expanded summer programs, and they have no remote option. So we're going to tell them as a district that they must be masked unless they provide medical backup, right? Some sort of medical backup proof, and then that will exempt them from the mask-wearing. Just want to make sure everybody understands about the summer.
Well, that, the difference now with the summer, we're going, right now, we're working on the executive order that was written under the pandemic emergency. That, when that emergency expires, we're not under that executive order anymore. So that's actually something that we're in discussion right now with the administrator who's overseeing the summer program about allowing that option.
And is there an expiration date yet?
I don't remember what it is. It was, whenever he ended, whenever he made the announcement, Governor Murphy made the announcement, it was 30 days from there. And I don't remember when that date was.
Yeah, I think, I think it expires right after the Fourth of July.
Right.
That week, the week following the Fourth.
Right, so if that's the case, then at that point, we can go to optional.
And our intention then is to go to optional where it's parental discretion?
Yes.
So I'd like to ask a follow-up question then. So why can't we just put that into the document right now as the board and state that following the governor's directive, as of 30 days from whatever, we'll do the research, discover what date, as of 30 days from the date that the governor states that the emergency is over, we will begin to follow an optional masking policy where it will be up to the person, the individual person or parents of those under the age of 18 or guardianship to make that decision? to make that decision?
I just looked to Mr. Gagliardi, and he said, yes, we can do that.
Okay, I'd like to, do I need to make a?
Do we need a motion for a resolution for that?
You don't need one. You can do one if you want, but I think that unless the board does not have a consensus on it, it seems pretty clear to me.
Well, I saw some people, I think we should have a resolution so people can vote on it, and it's, because it should be a board vote. So the resolution should state, let Mr. Gorski have a minute. He's our resolution writer. Ms. Belko, do you want to move that?
Yes, I will move that.
In the language? Okay.
I guess, be it resolved that the Board of Education, as part of the, what's the name of the plan, Dr. Alvich? I'm sorry?
The Safe Return to In-Person Instruction.
Safe Return to In-Person Instruction will follow the edict given by Governor Murphy as to the date, 30 days from the edict of, whatever that date is, if I knew the dates, I would put these in, but?
Respectfully? To make masks optional on the date that the state of emergency declared by the governor expires.
What he said. If that's acceptable.
Second.
Oh, second.
Thank you.
Ms. Chirrelli? Ready? Do you want to read that for us? Thank you.
Do you resolve that the Monroe Township Board of Education, as part of the safe returns to in-person instruction, will follow the edict by Governor Murphy, which stipulates that 30 days after the date of emergency expires, masks will be optional?
If I may, Madam President?
Yes, please.
It's not 30 days after the state of emergency expires. The state of emergency expires 30 days after the governor made the announcement. So I would suggest you take the 30 days out, and it simply, you want that to take effect when the state of emergency expires. Have I captured the intent of the motion?
Yes, that is the intent of the motion. Thank you very much, and I will agree to that wording.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Got it?
Yep.
All right. Okay, everybody?
Can we have a discussion?
Yes, go. Well, we need a first and a second. You have the first and the second. On the second, okay, yes, Mr. Polari.
God forbid if it has another wave or something happens in a month from now. Wouldn't that govern everything and supersede what's being said at this meeting?
Yes, as would always be the case, you'd have to yield to state law. So if one of the variants caused a state of emergency?
I just wanted everybody to be aware of that.
Right, the board wouldn't have to act. The governor would declare it, and you'd be obligated to follow it.
Anyone else? I think, I think everyone is concerned about the health and welfare of the children, and if, if for any reason we have a surge or something changes and it becomes more dangerous for our children, I think that everybody is in agreement that we would be, we would revert back to what's the safety protocols. So I think we're all on the same page for that one. Okay, Mr. Gorski, if you are ready, sir?
Yes. Motion moved by Ms. Belko, seconded by Mr. Chirrelli. Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Chirrelli?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Alvich.
I will make the?
Madam President, I have one question.
Date before it gets posted tomorrow.
Okay. I think Dr. Alvich said that the report is due to the state by June 24th. June 24th is literally less than eight days away. So my question is that you want public's input?
Tonight.
And you said you want to continue to draft and redraft and, you know, update it. So what's the process? I mean, are you going to submit it as a draft to the state?
Yeah, it actually has on here a date revised.
Okay.
So this is the template from the state. So the state is expecting us to have to revise this multiple times through the summer.
Okay.
But the first draft is due June 24th.
Got it, thank you.
And so then this resolution will be added to this draft?
I can do that, yes.
Yeah, we'll put that in that as well.
I can't, I can put it on the draft, I can't submit it to the state, because I'm limited to that 1,000-character piece. So there's not going to be a place to put that resolution, but what I will do is reword the first section, letter A, to include what the resolution says.
Okay.
But it won't just be the resolution as separate.
As long as the intent is in there, that's fine. Okay.
And again, it will be sent out to the community on Friday, so the board will also get a copy of that.
Okay, and then the public, when we get to public forum, we'll be able to speak on that. So if we shall move on, may I? Everybody? Okay, so committee reports are next. Mr. Chirrelli, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we had a finance committee meeting on Wednesday, June 9th. It was virtual, it was at 8:00 PM, and we had four items, and they were lengthy discussion items. And I'm going to briefly go through those right now. So we had the Apple Refresh and Lease Proposal. Mr. Gorski and Mr. Feldman updated the committee on the previously submitted Apple Finance Service Lease, including all exhibits, as well as the Apple Insurance Price Quote. Mr. Gorski presented that total principle with the lease, that the lease is $1,608,231.80. And that he and Mr. Feldman negotiated 0% interest rate with Apple. It's a three-year lease purchase, where the district owns the equipment after the final three-year payments of $536,077.27 after that's made, and then the committee members asked questions, which were answered by both Mr. Gorski and Mr. Feldman. Mr. Gorski also warned the committee that Apple, despite previously providing a delivery date for the third week of July, has indicated that production and delivery impairments from China have caused a delay, and that we're looking at the middle to the end of August. Members suggested not auctioning off, and I'll talk about that next, but not auctioning off the units until we have the new units received. So the point there is if we, if there's another delay, that at least we have something that our students can use until, until we receive those units, and then we could auction them off. And that is a segue to the second item that we discussed, which is GovDeals Proposal, a sale of one-to-one instructional equipment. So as part of the one-to-one initiative refresh, Mr. Gorski informed the committee that administration has identified the best time to auction the previous generation iPads to maximize fair market value is immediately after three years of use. In the past, we've recognized about one-third of the equipment cost by salvaging the equipment after three years. The value of the devices fall off the charts after that period, and so the administration has recommended that we sell through GovDeals the following equipment. So 2,306 generation iPads circa 2018, I was going to say 1918, with cases, and then 90 MacBook Pro circa 2018. Mr. Gorski explained that conservatively, he expects the bids in the $300,000 to $500,000 range. However, he would not be surprised if it meets the whole year first, the whole first year's Apple lease obligation, which would be a good thing. The next thing that we discuss is the 21-22 lease purchase, and Mr. Gorski presented a timeline of the 21-22 lease purchase to the committee and provided a, I thought that was me. I thought, I was like, man, I'm having a flashback. Description of computer equipment, TV studio equipment, facilities equipment, and transportation equipment totaling $1,761,026, including 5% purchase order inflation contingency. Please see the timeline and the lease purchase schedule for that. Now, that's something that I'm going to ask Mr. Gorski to elaborate upon, because it's, when he went through that with us, it was pretty in-depth, and I think he'd do a better job explaining it.
Sure, thanks. As part of the finance committee notes, the public can see this one-page PowerPoint timeline, and it just goes over this transaction from start to finish. June 16th, 2021 is where the Board of Education will be presented with the Lease Authorization Resolution, that's tonight, and assuming successful passage of that resolution. Next step is June 21st, to publish and advertising the financing notice of bid. Keep in mind, this bid is for financing of the lease purchase equipment, not the purchase of the equipment itself. So this is just, you get the taxpayer's best interest rate by going out to bid for the financing. July 13th, 2021 is when the financing bid opening will occur. July 21st, '21 is when the board will be presented with the Bid Award Resolution. And finally, we'll close on the financing mid-August.
Great, thank you. And then the last item that we discussed was the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief and the subgrant award for that. So Dr. Lehman, as you heard tonight, we went through that, but Dr. Lehman gave us a presentation, and he explained that the administration is monitoring NJ S-3434. This bill would require boards of education to provide special education and related services to certain students exceeding age of eligibility for special education and related services. The bill is currently awaiting the governor's signature. The district has identified the ESER ARP funding to support the tuition costs, transportation costs, and the related services costs for out-of-district students and within-district students, of whom the additional year of eligibility would apply. So then, and Mr. Gorski reminded the committee that his recent communications, where he informed us of a new grant called the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund, in the total, the district was awarded $1,035,061. So thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm ready.
Yes, Mr. Gorski?
So I was just going to say, I know the 1.6 million for the Apple iPads, sounds like a really big number, but just, I don't know if you guys talked about it in the meeting, but the price per unit, if my calculation's right, is $555. So in and of itself, that's, that's a really good deal.
Yeah.
Let alone to get back 200 or change to trade in the old ones. And just 1.6 million sounds like such a big number for one-to-one initiative, but for $555, I think that's a great, a great thing we're actually providing to all the students. So just wanted to talk about the per-unit cost, that's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Polari?
Madam President, I know we're talking about the iPads, but I know that the school district also gained several notepads in the past, especially the last year. So what's the, two questions really, I mean, what's the status of upgrading those or updating those? And are we, do we have a policy or some kind of a practice that iPads are given to the high school students, and we're using the notebooks only for non-high school students, or are we mix-matching it?
Dr. Alvich, you want to add to that?
Yeah, right now, it's one-to-one for iPads at the high school only. The rest of the district, we use Chromebooks or laptops. We also have some laptops at the high school for specific classes that need it for certain subject areas. Yes, we did get a large number last year of Chromebooks with our COVID funds to make sure that we had, we were able to provide our students who were working remotely, if they needed devices, they have devices. So there is a plan in the technology under Dr. Feldman to renew those each year. So that's part of our budgeting process when we meet every year to talk about which things need to refresh, so that we're not doing it all at the same time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, couldn't see you. Ms. Lynn, Dr. Lynn?
I just wanted to update everyone, the governor signed S-3434 today. So I have a little bit more of an update in my report, but at the time of the committee meeting, it was still on his desk. He did sign it today, and he made an announcement about that today.
Great, wonderful, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Kirby?
I just have one question. With this purchase of the iPads, do we purchase Apple Care with that as well, the insurance? Is that the insurance that we carry through that? They give us Apple Care?
Mr. Gorski, would you like?
Yes, yes, it includes Apple Care and also the hard cases that the devices are secured in.
So we? Now, is the question, do, does the district purchase the Apple Care? That's the insurance, is that correct?
That, that's my question. Do we have Apple Care on all of those? And, you know, anybody that has an Apple device and has Apple Care knows that if you crack your screen and you go to an Apple Store, under Apple Care, the screen is covered to be replaced. However, we got an email today to parents saying that if you have a cracked screen, there is a charge for that. So my question is, if we have Apple Care and the parents are paying the insurance fee for that, then why are we also charging for something that should be covered under the Apple Care?
Is there, is there a distinction between the, the purchase of the insurance and what we charge parents?
Yes, the, the Apple Care is included in the price per unit that Mr. Rutske mentioned before, as I stated, the cases are also in there. The, that charge is, by memory, I think it's $85 per parent we charge for the insurance. If an instance occurs where a device is broken and has to be sent back to Apple, the most common reason is the screen being broken. There is shipping and handling back and forth, there is staff time. In the inception of this program, there was an actual deductible of $75 that had to be paid to Apple. The administration is stipulating that that remain to cover the cost of the back and forth and the shipping and insurance, and recover some of the staff time. But most importantly, you may recall in the beginning of this, we had a hiccup where a lot of these devices were being misused. And hundreds of them literally were going back with Apple Care. The insurance has been a great deterrent and has provided encouragement to responsible handling of these, and we, the numbers have gone significantly down that have to go back.
When we started this, was it $50 for the insurance when we first started this years ago? Because that's the number I recommend, I remember. It's gone to 85?
Yes, and then you also, I don't know what is it covered under that insurance, because the biggest thing that happens to these devices is a cracked screen, and we have to pay for that. So why are we paying an insurance fee? What is the insurance? Usually, when you pay an insurance fee, you have coverage. The Apple Care, if you purchase the Apple Care at Apple on your phone, like I have, and you crack your screen, you walk in there, and they fix it for you for free, because you have the Apple Care insurance. So if we're saying we're paying, if we're telling parents the insurance fee is to cover the Apple Care, but then you don't have the coverage that the Apple Care provides you.
Madam, approximately $85 is the insurance charge that's included in the per-unit cost. That does cover the cost of the repair, but it does not cover the district's costs of insuring and shipping and the staff time to package and send these back. So that's, that's the reason that we believe the $85 deterrent is still in place, that if a device is broken and it has to be sent back. It also requires another loaner machine be available. That means the district has to buy extra machines and keep them in inventory when these things break. It was a very sloppy practice in the beginning that we really got on track right now, so it's our recommendation that it stay.
And, you know, just to note, it's a requirement, and it's an expense that parents are forced to, to pay, and it is causing, you know, some financial hardships for, for parents. We don't have to pay for our textbooks, but we're, they're required to use the iPad, and the fees keep going up.
Well, we could talk, I suppose, in finance, we could talk about the fees, and if the board has problems with that, we can also ask what, what the average cost of shipping and handling is. But you sort of mentioned that you have to go to an Apple Store. Well, if parents can't go to an Apple Store, if there's a problem with the iPad and it has to be shipped, there is, there's cost involved. So I guess we have to talk about that. Mr. Tofano?
That was, that was my next question.
Mr. Tofano?
If a parent wants to take a trip to the mall and have that screen fixed, they should be able to present their Apple insurance that they paid for to have the screen fixed. And we shouldn't have to ship them?
They don't own the iPad, though, is that the problem?
It's the district insurance on the device.
It's a district product.
Well, if I'm paying, if I'm forced to pay for insurance on a device, and I can't use that insurance without going through you, then that's not fair. Then I should just pay you $75 a year, and then you deal with it. I shouldn't have to pay twice. What's the point of having insurance? I'm paying $140 for a screen that would cost $100 if I fixed it myself. Why would I want to take insurance out like that? A screen on an iPad is about $100 to replace, from what, from what I've experienced.
Yep, again, the overall insurance is included in the per-unit cost, and there was a mention that I want to, I want to note for the public's benefit. If there is any household that is participating in free reduced lunch, they are not subject to the insurance charge.
Great, now you don't have to worry about those.
Just in, in my case alone, I have, I have to pay for four iPads. Two of my iPads, of course, they were cracked screens, so I had to lay out $140 on top of on top of the insurance for the rest of them. So, I, I would have loved to just package them up and bring them to the Apple Store and fix the screen with the insurance that I've already paid for. Instead, I had to bring them to the school and pay another $140 to fix two screens. So, it's like taking insurance, crashing your car, and then having to pay to fix the car anyway. Doesn't make much, much sense to me. I think we should, we need to do something about that.
I think we could talk about it, but again, it's a, it's a, the district owns, owns the iPad. Parents had to buy the iPad themselves, it would cost far more. I'm not arguing one way or the other, I'm just trying to, you know, put it in perspective that we give, we give these iPads one-to-one to each student. So, you have to have some recovery, I suppose, if things break. Karen, and then Mr. Polari.
I don't know if we would handle this in policy or finance, but at that next committee meeting, could we get some data on what the revenue, so to speak, what fees have come in paying for the cracked screens?
Okay, yeah, I think we could take that under advisement as well. Moving on, Mr. Polari?
I think if I heard correctly, Mr. Ratsky said that it's $550 a, a, a unit. If a parent wants to buy a unit and insure it themselves, what would be the cost of that? Would they get an insurance for $70 or $85, whatever the number may be? I'm assuming you got some bargain?
Yep. The only problem I could see with that is, is the management of these devices. Every year, they're cleaned and scrubbed, and they have software put on. Now, you have, you know, a diverse group of units, and they may not all be in the same shape, and they may not all work construction the, the same way. You know, we have much better safety controls, controlling the content that comes through. You know, we have a lot of bugs with this program that we've ironed out very successfully over the years, and, and we're proud of the way it's working now.
But we'll go ahead and, Ms. Belkunka?
I'm sorry, so, just so I understand, because I, I had four children, still have one in the district, and, and so I, I hear you, Peter. And, you know, cracked screens and things. So, I know that I paid the insurance fee at the beginning of the year when I got the iPads, and then when I turned it in, if there was a piece missing, if there was an iPad, believe me, I went out and bought iPad chargers just because it was cheaper to do that than to return it without a charger and get charged from the district. So, I, so I made sure that everything was. But I did have one, you know, cracked screen, and I wound up paying additional money on top of the insurance I already paid at the beginning of the year, which I was told about. And if I understand correctly, if my memory serves me correctly, there was a deductible on that insurance as well. So, is that, is the $75 the deductible that you're, that we're talking about? Or, because I still, I just feel like that's the cost of doing business of the shipping. You, you, you stated that we have to ship them, we have to have our staff's time to do them and all that. But that's the cost of doing business. So, that should be, I mean, we have to pay the staff to be here anyway? And I, are we paying the staff overtime to do these things? Because if that's the case, then, then we need to talk about that in the committee and make sure that we're not doing that. But if we're, if, if this is part of what's happening in their normal, everyday business, we're not paying them any extra to do this, it's part of their regular job. So, that should, I don't find that argument to be, to stand up, to me.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think we need further discussion on this, but I, you know, I just think that we shouldn't let it go.
No, we're not gonna let it go.
I don't think if we, you know, I don't know if we're gonna solve this here tonight, but I think we need to have further discussion.
Okay. Mr. Gorsky?
In its inception, there was a $75 deductible for every broken unit that went back to Apple. That was the minimum charge for anything that went back. If there was severe damage to it and went above that, the district had to pay that on top of the 75 bucks. Over the course of these refreshes with Apple, that has been negotiated out and into the cost of the unit. So, there is no more deductible for any unit that's, that is broken and sent back. The $85, however, has been recommended now by administration for, I will say, several years to continue, because again, the strong detriment that it plays to breaking the units, the money collected goes into a fund that is used exclusively for the refresh of the units to keep the program going if there's any difficult budget years where, you know, financial issues occur. And, you know, again, I just, you know, I asked you to go back to the minutes when this program first came out. There was 450 people in this, in this auditorium one time, all very much opposed to the initiative because they were seeing pictures of units thrown out of bus windows and things like that. And I was sitting right here at the brunt of all that. The $85 gives some, some skin in the game, that if you break a unit and you have to get a second unit paid for by the taxpayers, as yours goes back and is shipped and insured and, and has to come back, that there's some cost to it. And although there is not a specific matching anymore, because like I said, the deductible has been removed, the consequence of this has been successful. But if the finance committee wants to revert back to the way it was, that's their prerogative.
Okay, so I think we can agree that it'll be first spoken of in finance. Does anybody think, think another committee should take a look at it? I don't know buildings and grounds, since it's a facilities issue.
Is there a policy on it?
Well, we can look at, we can look for a policy. I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to change a policy.
Just to note, I mean, we are saying, you know, $85 a year, four years, that's $340. So, the parents are paying the bulk of the cost of the iPad if, if each, if that's built in, the insurance is built in, and Paul said?
$555.
$555. So, over the four years, the parents?
You mean, if they're, if they're not having a break, if nothing happens?
If nothing's hap, right, if nothing happens, they're already covering $340 of the cost of the iPad. So, to say the taxpayers are paying it, the parents are paying the bulk of it. So, that, that's something too. If, and then if there, you break the screen twice, you're already over the cost of what the district is paying for the iPad.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll take that to committees, all right? Shall we move on? Anybody else? Are, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Any, next? Next committee meeting?
I'll go.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
All right, so we reviewed non-affiliates 21, 22.
This is the personnel committee?
Personnel. Vacancy list, we reviewed the administration contracts, exit review, and building use position. And I can't go into detail.
Say that last one again, sorry.
Building use position.
Building use?
Building use.
Okay. Do you want to elaborate on anything, or? No?
Unless it was Christmas in June, as.
Mr. Tofano?
I wanted to read my committee report, is that okay?
Oh, do you have a question, Ms. Spearman? Did you have a question, or did you want to elaborate on that?
She's wearing red.
No, no, okay, I'm sorry.
Madam President, I would like to get an elaboration on the facility use.
Which one?
The last one.
Building use position?
Yeah.
Am I allowed to?
Well, you can't talk about, oh, it's a?
Personnel, we can talk about the position.
You can talk about the position, building use position, it's?
Position, okay, I'm sorry.
It's a job.
Got it.
Yeah, I, I thought it was building use.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Position.
I apologize, okay.
Did you want to describe?
No, no need.
No, no need, okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
It's on the agenda for tonight, if you want to look into it.
Mr. Tofano, did you want to go ahead?
Yeah, that would be great. On June 9th, we had a B G and T meeting. An Eagle Scout project was presented to us by student Ion Bora. He presented an Eagle Scout service project to construct a gaga pit at Brookside School. The committee fully supports Ion proceeding with his project and thanked him for his efforts. As with this project and the other ones presented to us, I offered Mr. Bora a work truck of mine and tools and whatever supplies he needed to complete the project.
Now, before you go on, could you tell the public what that is? Because I had no idea during that, was it?
Gaga pit is basically an octagon pit where students are in the pit, and the ball is thrown at the walls, and it has to pass through the, I believe he said, the knees of the opposing players for them to be out. It's basically an octagon made out of wood. I think it's about three feet high, and, and the inside is a terrain that's not harmful to the students. I guess that would be sand or, or some kind of dirt. And he, he says the game's fun. I never played it, but I'll take his word for it, he's a great kid.
And that's gonna go on our, one of our school?
Brookside, yes.
Brookside.
Brookside School.
Did you, did you guys know how to play that? Do you want to give a quick?
It's definitely fun.
It's fun?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, we'll take your word for it, right? Can adults play?
Show us.
We'll see. This is kind of, thank you, I'm sorry.
Second item on the agenda was the SSP Architects' Proposal. SSP presented their proposal for a limited design study for building in Apple, on the Apple Goth school site. The, the committee requested that the scope of work for the proposal be to construct a 1,200-student elementary school. The committee and the full board will review this proposal at the forthcoming, forthcoming public, public meeting. The committee chair requested that a two-hour B G and T meeting be scheduled for July to discuss the proposed projects. The third thing on the agenda was a safety grant for C C T, CCTV at Mill Lake School. We had the opportunity to apply for a grant to obtain funding that could be applied to replacing the closed-circuit television system at Mill Lake School. The committee endorsed proceeding, proceeding in this regard. Administration will prepare a resolution to action on submitting this grant at an upcoming public meeting. The next thing on the agenda was the residence that is for sale between the Barclaybrook School and the Brookside School. The committee reviewed the realtor's offering sheet for the site. Administration advised that the previous boards had desired to purchase this property when the schools were built, and therefore, administration was advising the committee of the availability of this parcel of land. Some committee members recommended that the township pursue acquiring this property to prevent another homeowner from occupying the site, which creates a less-than-desirable situation with an access drive route routing through the school bus and drop-off. That's definitely something we have to look into and see what its benefits are, if any. On the, and the last item we had was the, I'll explain briefly, the Monroe Township Baseball, what's the word I'm looking for?
Complex.
Baseball Association purchased a scoreboard, and they were told that there was electric to the pole, you know, to the, where the board was gonna be put, and that electric doesn't work. So, they have a nice, beautiful scoreboard they paid for with no electric. And so, we were given a, an estimate on that to run the electric there, and it was $16,000. So, I'll, I'll read the, what occurred. The baseball field electricity at Oak Tree Tree Field, Oak Tree Baseball Field Committee discussed options for funding, which included seeking donations and/or making it, making it a sponsorship, sponsorship item for a local electrician. Administration was asked to look into those options as well. The bid for $16,000 seemed quite high, and there are no other estimates that were sought. So, we're gonna, we're gonna look into that, see if we can get those, that scoreboard lit up and the electricity running there. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Yes, Ms. Siegel?
Good evening. Just one question, would it be possible, since, if you're planning a two-hour B G and T meeting, if the full board can be there? So, we all have the opportunity to ask questions and hear what's coming out of design study?
I mean, that would probably just require a special meeting, so we can have a special meeting. We won't, i, i, if, if the change is, and the full board agrees, instead of having a committee meeting that day, we will choose another day maybe to have a special meeting. We do have to have a special meeting, well, we need to have a special meeting for something else before June 30th. But I guess we could talk about how, how to do that. You're right, I mean, this is sort of important.
It's important. If we're making a decision as a full board, then I think it would give us an opportunity to be able to ask questions, right, to?
Mr. Tofano, would, do you want to still have your committee meeting?
I don't object to having a special meeting. This is a very important subject, and we're at DEFCON 5 with it. It needs to get done right away. However, I don't want, and don't, I don't want anybody to be offended, I don't want 30 people in the meeting, because then it just becomes chaotic. I want to have the B G and T decide a route that we would like to take. Of course, you know, Dory has great input in that as well. But I, I, I want us to come with a limited amount of ideas and then bring it up to the full board. And like, you know, like she suggested, we can have a special meeting on that discussion and then have everyone involved.
I, well, I think we'll have to talk about the logistics of that.
Yes.
The open-public meeting acts as if the full board is there, you have a quorum.
Right.
It, it structures a whole different situation, and you'll have to open it to the public.
Right. And I, I, I don't have any problem with the whole board, of course, having a hand in that decision. It's something we all should be involved in, it's very important.
Mr. Polari?
President, actually, I wrote the question, thanks Rupert for asking, but I just, if I heard Mr. Tofano correctly, he's saying that the decision, the, the decision is gonna be made by the B G and T team members.
That's not what I said.
That's not what you said.
No, I said, I want to have a plan designed by just the B G and T with a limited amount of people in it, so there's not too much confusion. And then we would present that plan to the full board, and then everyone can put their input in.
So, let me rephrase my question then. If there is going to be a full board two-hour meeting, the non-B G and T members will have a say in it, or we're just sitting there to listen?
No, you, you, no. The, the two-hour meeting is gonna be for the committee. After the committee comes up with some type of plan, then I would like for the full board to have input on it, obviously, but we have to before we vote on anything.
Well, I think Ms. Siegel just asked that the two-hour committee would include the full board.
Well, I think?
Then it's not a committee meeting, then it's not a committee meeting. Then it's a special meeting. So, I think we should have the full two-hour committee meeting, and then we can have, if needed, we could have a two-hour.
Madam President, I'm, I'm looking at the SSP architectural study here, and I reviewed this over the last couple of days. I tried to find the May 5 document and look at it. This is neither scope nor a schedule in this. We don't know what the end product is. It almost seems like blind is leading the blind here. They're talking about what they're gonna do and what they need to get to do the work, but they're not saying what work is gonna be done, what products are gonna be given to the school district for $67,000. So, if we're gonna continue down this path, then we'll be sitting on the sidelines and watch the game go on?
Yes, Ms. Skirby?
Well, I think the reason that the committee asked to have a two-hour meeting was because so much of the B G and T meetings have been, the time has been taken up on other matters, and we have not been able to discuss these, this proposal and the plans with SSP in detail because we keep running out of time. So, that was the idea of having a, a longer meeting. You know, the, the, the board approved a limited design study back in February. We've yet to get that. This is what we have been trying to get, the committee has been trying to get at. We have not had documents given to us. We've had the architects show up, and we have been blindsided. We, they are talking about documents that everyone else in the room had but the committee. So, it is not on the committee for why this is being dragged out so long. And I think that the committee is trying to get it under control and have a discussion of what, what options we have and what recommendations would come from the committee, as it has always been done that way.
Madam President, this document has been sent to me almost a week ago. I think it's distributed to all the board members. It's a matter of going and reading it, and I read it, and I'm making my conclusions based on what I saw here. So, I don't know why this is such a long, prolonged process. It's fairly simple. When you ask somebody for a proposal, you're looking for an end product. So, what is the end product these guys are gonna give for a limited study? What is a limited study?
We?
What are the parameters set up, set around?
We asked for a construct of a 1,200-student school on the Apple Goth property. That's the end product.
So, what are you gonna get, a report, are you gonna get plans, you're gonna get a cost estimate, you're gonna get a timeframe? What are we, what is the end product?
That's, that's correct. All of the above, sir. All of the above.
I don't think you're gonna get plans.
Well, that's what we asked for.
Yeah.
So, if we don't get it, then whose fault is that? It's not the committee's fault.
Well, it is. If you're gonna approve this scope of work and give them a 76, I'm not trying to argue If you're going to approve this scope of work and give them a 76, I'm not trying to argue with you guys.
No, it's not.
If it's approved for $67,000, and you're basically telling them that you give us a limited study on the, on the, on the school, and they can do, give you anything. They can give you a, you know, back of the napkin, drawing of something, and say it's going to cost you $5 million. There's no way of verification. It has to be signed and sealed by somebody so that it holds water, that we can take it to the public and convince the public that what we're putting in front of them is valid, reasonable, it's been engineered.
So, so, as a committee, how do you suggest? Should I go and sit in their office and guide them what we need, or? I mean, that's their job. They know that they're a limited, they've done a school recently that we all went and, we all took time to went and see, and they did a great job, and we want something exactly like that, and we were very clear with them what we wanted, and that's what they're going to give us.
Peter, I'm not privy to what discussions you had with them. All I'm privy to is the four-page letter, there was three-page letter that was given to me to review. This does not have a scope, schedule, and a budget. How can you embark on a project without having scope, schedule, and budget? That's my simple question, and not knowing what the end product is.
We pay our administrators a lot of money to do this work. So, board members who are elected to help guide the process do not go and do the work. We don't, we, we're paying, you know, we're, we're paying people upwards of $200,000 a year to do this work, and it's not being done. We're paying people to put, to give our committee, the BGNT committee, documentation of what we should be looking at, and we're not getting that for, for our meetings. So, you know, you could sit here, and I, and I get your point. We should have an engineer in BGNT. I know that's where that's going, and I get it.
No, that's not weird.
But, but the bottom line is, we pay, we pay our administrators to do a job, and I expect them to do that job, and you're right. We need to have this information, and we need to have it right now. We're, this is the limited design study in order to get that information, but I'm telling you right now, we, this is where we're at. So, Mr. Tagg and all of our other administrators who are tasked with this need to do their jobs.
Wait one second.
We're not, we're not here to micromanage. We're just here to make recommendations.
We are micromanaging, all right.
Administration does their job.
If I may, I, this is not about who's engineer needs to be on the BGNT. We're all in a team. If somebody sends me this and review it, those are the same comments I would give whether I'm on the board or not. So, the bottom line is that we all had a chance to review it. Do you guys know what the end product looks like?
Madam? Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, at, at the previous Building Grounds Transportation Committee meeting, and at a previous board meeting, the Board of Education here resolved to have a timeline for the referendum. SSP Architects delivered to us a timeline, which we incorporated into the initial proposal that was presented to Building Grounds Transportation. Now, the delivery method for that, there was an administrative error where it didn't go into board docs, but it was posted to the website, and, you know, we, upon receipt, immediately turned it around to the board. We brought the architects there, we handed out copies at the committee meeting, and we discussed it. But, the meeting was abruptly stopped because there was confusion about what was being presented, why are we having a timeline, even though we had a resolution asking for it, and the proposal itself. To help this conversation, the proposal is a limited design study that's based on the cost. That is, that is the goal here, is to determine the cost of a 1,200-student Clermont-style school at the specific topography at Applegoth school location. So, then you will have a cost estimate for the construction of a 1,200-student Clermont-like school at Applegoth, and you will also have another cost estimate proposal, limited design study, for additions at Barclaybrook and Brookside. And that will give this board all the information you need, including a timeline, to determine which products, which projects are a priority and how to proceed next. Do you want to do both? Is it palatable to the committee from a tax standpoint, or do you want to do this piecemeal? And that's, that's where we're heading with this process. But, but, you know, administration keeps taking the brunt of why this isn't ready and whose fault it is, but everything that's been requested so far has been furnished by this administrative team.
Okay. So, just a brief history. In February, a resolution was put on, and we all agreed, and we approved it, that we would get an idea of the cost and type of school on Applegoth property. Instead of building a new school somewhere else, we, we've, we've gone through various referenda, we've gone through different scenarios, so, and, and in the last failure of the referendums, they, we've asked to, well, let's use the facilities that we have, and let's see if we can add on to the land that we have, and where, so that's what, we came up with this. We had schools that were going to cost 80, 75 to 80 million dollars, and this was an attempt to get a, a school, and it's, it is a brick-and-mortar school, if you will, but it has different steel construction and everything, that may reduce the cost of an actual building. And that was the intent of the board, trying to provide, instead of the 80-million-dollar school, Clermont costs, Mr. Tafano, what?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six million. Okay? That's, we're not going to get a school for 36 million. It's five years ago, things have changed, but even if we put the same school on, we, we are hoping that we would get an estimate for a school for less money. So, so, that was the initial agreement in February. When we got to March and April, we didn't get that, we didn't get that information. Instead, we got a timeline, and if we had passed that timeline, it would have been $93, $93,000. That was not what the committee asked for, even though the next resolution was for a timeline. But, we had never gotten the February resolution satisfied. So, we went back to SSP and sort of clarified what we were looking for, and we got them down to $67,000, and I think the scope of which is we're going to get an idea if we can build a school similar to the Clermont school, and for how much. It's really that simple. I mean, we all think it's absurd to, to pay this kind of money to get even limited designs, but apparently, that's what the market calls for. I mean, we have architects or in-house, you know, architects that we vote on every year. When they send us something, it's, it's no less than $50,000 every time, or 90,000, or... So, it's apparently, it offends me as a taxpayer, and we certainly would like to put the taxpayers at ease, but apparently, that's the market rate for these engineering companies and to do this. Maybe we need to have a different kind of discussion, but to move this forward, I think this is what we're talking about.
Madam, Madam President?
One second. Is there, go ahead.
One, one very important component of that, of clarification. In order to submit, in order to submit whatever plan comes to fruition here by this board to the Department of Education Facilities, you have to have a complete, comprehensive plan to deal with all of the unhoused students. That is what was incorporated in that original $93,000 proposal, and that was the, you know, administration working with the architects so that we don't just come up with, forgive my language, but a half-assed project that would never float through the Department of Education without having to come back for, for major revisions.
Yes, but if we had, if we had voted and approved that $93,000 timeline, that was an implication that we were hiring them to do the referendum, and I don't think that that's what the board wanted at the time. And please correct me if I'm wrong, if, so that's the dilemma.
I beg to differ. Limited design study is not hiring the architect to construct.
No, I'm talking about the timeline. If, the language of that timeline was pretty much they were going ahead to do the referendum.
Yes.
Well, the timeline that was presented at BGNT would be no matter who was hired. We're still going to have to follow the state requirements in order to do all of the steps of a referendum project.
Yes, but we would...
So, they put it together for us so that we could have that as a guide as we're moving forward, as the board requested.
But, that would cost us $93,000.
That was not costing us, costing us the $93,000. There, that was a separate piece. The timeline was separate from the limited design proposal at the time. Their limited design proposal included the Applegoth piece, but also included the other projects because that would, because we're required to do all of them.
Madam?
Ms. Belko is waiting.
I, that is not my understanding. When I spent the time to go through those documents, the way I read that, the way I comprehended that was that, that $97,000 meant that we were going to be hiring that company to do this work and to move us forward to a referendum timeline to go to the Department of Education, and perhaps that's where the miscommunication has come in, is that we didn't ask the right question at the time, but there was, I understand, I'm not on the BGNT committee, but I do understand there was definitely a lack of understanding from, between the board, the administration, and the poor architectural firm. I kind of felt bad for them when I heard what happened, because I think they were blindsided as well, and not having the documentation was an issue. But, we, we are still in the middle of Peter's report for Building and Grounds, and I do think that we, you know, we need to decide, based off of Rupa's suggestion, the BG, maybe we put a timeline on that. Maybe we say BGNT needs to meet for their two-hour meeting with a single agenda of this item by June 30th, so that for the July BGNT committee, we can have a special meeting and bring it forward, or we have a special meeting before that and bring it forward.
That's the intent, is July to be exclusively.
I think that, you know, so, I think that, that, I, I have no problem if the BGNT committee wants to have a different date for their meeting, so that they can discuss solely the issue of the building, of the, of a building that we sorely need. So, I, you know, but I, I do have to agree with Ms. Siegel here that the whole board should probably have a special meeting. Once the BGNT committee has a plan, this is what we want to do, then we make a decision, because this board needs to make a decision, and we need to move forward, because we cannot wait anymore. We have students that are, you know, are unhoused. You can see right behind you what we have there, rental walls from Staples. I have the same in, in certain training areas that I work with. You know, we can't continue to teach our kids like that. We need a building, and I think we need to move forward with this, and Peter, I think you're, you know, you, I think you're on the right track. Let's get everybody together, but let's not wait until July. Let's do a special BGNT committee before July and get this moving.
Mr. Rutske had his hand up first, then you, Ms. Siegel.
So, I'm still not even exactly sure what the special BGNT meeting is for. If we're going to authorize possibly this, this are, this proposal for limited design study, and it's all laid out there, I'm not exactly sure what is this special meeting to do until they are done with their proposal, and then they come back and they present. But, hold that thought for just a second, because I feel like Mike just let, just sort of let me in on a secret here.
Yes.
So, or let us all. What you just said with regards to going to the state, with regards to, you know, a possible referendum someday, and, and a different study on different schools, if we don't go with the full package of solving our unhoused students, it's a futile exercise. So, one school does not suffice, obviously, solving that problem. It's a school, it's additions, it's, I don't know, you know, you need, we talked about additions to the high school, like, so, how do we possibly?
That is, that is correct. The Department of Facilities wants a plan in dealing with all of the unhoused students, based upon your, your demographic report that's required with submission also. We, we don't have a current demographic report.
Right, we're going to need a new one of those.
And yes, you have to have a plan. It doesn't mean you have to do everything that's included in that plan, but you're demonstrating to the Department of Facilities that you understand that you have that many unhoused students, that you have a, a, a plan and a, and a strategy for dealing with it, and then you can...
It can be staggered.
You can, yes.
And that's the purpose of having that two-hour meeting, is to talk about that as well.
So, not just a one Clermont-type school, but the other project.
That's correct.
But, but my, my thought is, we had a referendum that only included a middle, a middle school.
The middle school.
So, we didn't have a, a plan to the state that included all the other unhoused students. We had one that we were able to go to referendum on.
I, I beg to differ. We did have a comprehensive plan that included how to handle all the unhoused students.
Right.
It included partially trailers and some other items that was acceptable.
But, that wasn't, we didn't go out for referendum on all of it, but we had a plan. Well, we expect to have a plan for everything, and that's why we tried to introduce different kinds of construction. We tried to talk about, not trailers, everybody, we're not talking about the rental trailers. We're talking about actual modular construction that has, I believe, a life expectancy of possibly 20 years, 10 to 20 years.
Sometimes long, it depends on the material you use.
Right. So, so, we tried to introduce that. We, we tried to introduce a cheaper, or not cheaper, construction, a construct, an alternate construction that doesn't make, have a cheaper school. I mean, it was brick, it was steel, it just wasn't, you know, it didn't have marble on the floors. In Clermont School in Franklin, there were no marble floors. They were industrial concrete floors, but they suffice to allow the student traffic. So, it's that kind of thing that we were trying to do. We know we have a problem with having $150 million referendum.
Right.
So, we're trying to keep it, keep the price reasonable and fulfill the needs of the district.
And there's a lot of, so, just my, my final follow-up tiny piece to that. So, also, Mr. Gorsky, were you saying that the original proposal for the limited design study, what have you, was at 90-something thousand, was set to be more all-inclusive? And now, this is 67 just for this one building?
Correct. But, it wasn't giving us anything either. They weren't giving us a design of Clermont.
It was, it wasn't a design, but again, it was, it was taking Clermont School, at that time, the number of students in the school wasn't even determined yet, but it was, it was moving it to Applegoth, and it was also including with it a comprehensive plan for dealing with all of the unhoused students. That came to the original 97.
But, to, but to Andy's point, we weren't going to get any real design features. They were just going to keep talking about it, but let Rupa speak, and then Andy, and then we have to move on, I think.
So, I'm just going to go back to what I originally said. It seems like everyone has a little bit different that they've interpreted, that they understood. I really think it's important at this point, if we all come together as a board and hear the same stuff, because it seems like everyone's picking up something different here. I know I would benefit if I actually got to hear, hear right from the architects versus, and we're wasting time then. Now, we're going to have two meetings, but if we're all together and we're the decision-makers, we should be in one meeting, together.
Well, we should do that with every committee, because I want to hear stuff from committees.
Actually, I don't disagree with that, because I think that's a great, go to whole board as a committee. I do think that would save time.
That would be a quorum. That's, that's the reason why we have committees.
We would have, we would have a committee of the whole, which means every meeting.
Well, all of the committee meetings are now recorded, so they can be watched, and everyone can hear all the same.
And I'll be happy to answer any emails that the board members send me.
We can have a different discussion about that. Let's move to have the discussion.
No, but I, I do, I do agree with Rupa. I think that after our two-hour committee meeting, we should have another meeting, and then the board can meet as a whole.
Well, we shouldn't wait until July to have that, if you're going to do that.
No, we should, we could do it next week.
So, Rupa, would you be satisfied that we can have a discussion and then put it out to the public how to do it?
See, I'm looking to save time.
We all are.
Because if we all, right, this is urgent for the community. It's an urgent issue. I think we should be, we should be part of the two-hour committee, so we can all hear the discussions and make the decision, discuss, do the decision as a whole board. We make decisions on other things, too, but this is really important and urgent in the community right now. So, I think we should be not adding two meetings. We can have one meeting and move forward that way.
Well, maybe a timeframe. Ms. Belko, then Mr. Pelori, and then we'll make a decision.
I would like to propose a resolution if Peter is, is okay with that, since this is his committee meeting. I do think that, I, here's, my thought is, the BGNT committee needs to be able to have their committee meeting, where if it's going to be a, if it's going to be an in-person meeting, my understanding, because I've done nothing but Zoom meetings, so my understanding is the committee, the public is allowed to attend at committee meetings, but they are not allowed to speak. So, the public can see the discussion of just that committee and what they're going to do, and then we put a special meeting on the books for, for just one agenda item for the, for the BGNT committee to provide to the, to the board as a whole, a decision on what's, what's going to meet our requirement and our obligations, and I would like to see that it's done by June 30th. If my colleagues disagree, I, I think we need it, we need to make a decision. I, you know, I'm thinking we need, I, I agree with Peter. I think they need two meetings. I think they need to be afforded the opportunity as the BGNT committee to give us what Mr. Gorsky has said we need to be able to have, to move forward to the Department of Education Facilities, and then we, as the full board, can then meet and have one agenda item, discuss it, have public input, and then make a decision and say, let's move forward.
Well, before June 30th is, is a week away.
I understand that, but we, we're, we have, we don't, we're out of time.
Okay. Mr. Pelori, and then if you want to write a resol, if you want to make a resolution. Go ahead.
Thank you for recognizing me, Madam President. We are in this together. I don't know why I see people being very defensive about this. It doesn't matter if it's the board, it's the BGNT committee, or the administration. We're in this together. We owe it to the public of Monroe to come up with a plan. And if people want to trivialize this and say, as an engineer, we need, we're not on the BGNT, that's absolutely nonsense. I don't, I don't, I don't subscribe to that. The point here is that I think Rupa is saying it, I don't think people want to hear what we're asking here. All we're asking is if we're going to have a two-hour meeting with the architect, with Jerry Tagg, and the administration, let's have it together, all ten of us, so that we know what's going on. And then we come up with a plan and put it in front of the public. I understand that not every committee goes that way, but this is such an important item for the township, that we need to do this together once and for all. That's all we're asking. We want to be a part of it. And I say that because I see the total chaos in terms of what's being done here, what's being done at the BGNT, what conversation the contractor or architect is getting, what he's submitting. There's no correlation between any one of these. All we need to do is get on the same page. That's all we're asking for.
Mr. Turel.
I agree, we're all in this together, and I don't think I'm trivializing this. What I'd hope that, is that the township also wants to be in this together, and that you and the planning board, and as Chair of the Democratic Committee,
It has nothing to do with this.
that we, that we're going to stop the development that's driving us to this point, where we're stuck and we're having to deal with this. Oh, come on.
This is, Madam President.
Okay, wait a minute, all right.
Madam President, I take serious exception to Mr. Chirrell's comments. My designation, my, my business is none of it. I'm sitting here as a board member, we got a bunch of candidates sitting there and clapping for this. I think you need to bring the board to order, Madam President.
We're not gonna, we're not, it is.
Yeah, you should have done that five minutes ago.
Okay, well, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. Okay. Mr., the Chair of any committee can call the committee as to what they want. If the board wants to have a resolution, to have a special meeting, it will have to be open to the public whether, and the public will have to comment.
I, I understand that. That's why I wanted to afford the BGNT committee time to have a discussion without the public input at that point, because that can tend to not let them focus on what they need to. And I don't mean any disrespect to public input. I believe that everyone has an opportunity to speak, and at a special meeting, the public would be able to speak, once they have absorbed the thing. So I please, please do not misinterpret what I'm saying, that I don't want public participation.
So, so what is your res, what?
Madam President, if I may, help, I completely agree with her. I think the public can be, I think we have done this in the past. Where the board meets, public can be watching us, you know, virtually. We have a discussion, we bring the plan, and then the next board meeting, they can discuss.
No, if we have a full board meeting, Open Public Meetings Act requires public participation, period. So we're either going to have an open meeting with the public inattentive and their ability to speak, we'll have a focused, a limited and narrow-focused discussion. Maybe Mr. Tifano can lead that, and, and the administration. But the public will be present and available to speak. And then, Mr. Tifano, if you want to do that first, according to, if we get a resolution passed, and then we define it at the BGNT meeting next, you still want to have a two-hour meeting after that, but it, one way or the other, we have to make a decision. So if you care to have, to put a resolution forward, you can, and then, well, I guess we'll have to adjust to that. What resolution would you like to see?
I'd like to resolve that the BGNT committee meet to come to a decision on what's going to meet our requirements to, for our obligations to house our unhoused students. The committee should meet by June 30th, and then from that date, a special Board of Education meeting should be, should be put on the books prior to our July meeting. I think, I don't think we should wait.
I'll second that.
Not a problem, you're okay with that, okay.
I'll second that.
Well, let Mr. Gorsky, what, it's, the resolution's second, you can, yes, we can discuss that.
So am I correct in saying we're going to have these special meetings to decide what we're doing prior to getting the limited design study back? Because that is what we're, Peter was talking about having an extended meeting in July, hoping that we would have the limited design study back then. Without that study, what are we discussing and deciding? We're waiting for that to come back. I mean, it, it seems, what are, what are we gonna make it, what are we gonna discuss and talk about if we don't have the information that we need to discuss? He was saying that we were going to have, I believe in July, hoping that we had the study back for the July meeting, have one item on the BGNT meeting to go over the limited design study, and make it two hours, because the one-hour meeting is not enough time. Nobody's deciding what to do in the entire district right now. We were, the committee was asking to have more time to discuss the study that is due to us. I don't think it's coming.
Since February.
No, right, we asked for it in February.
So I, I think we're a little confused at what, what the BGNT committee was asking for. We were asking to meet a longer extended period of time to go through the study. If we don't have the study, why are we having a special board meeting to discuss? Because we still don't have, know how much that would cost us. So, I mean, that's what we were waiting to get.
We have a motion and a second.
There are, there are other aspects to the needs of the district that we need to discuss as well, as the modular units, the additions that are needed on some schools. There are other things to discuss. So we can still fill up a two-hour discussion, but I would prefer to have it in July, when we do get back that proposal.
And Mr. Teague was supposed to, I believe, provide us with the other aspects of housing our students. Is that correct? Has he done that? He said that that was gonna be, do we have a timeframe?
Correct.
Madam?
Yes.
I beg pardon, I spoke with Mr. Teague today about this issue, and he said that the Design Ideas Group Limited Design Study is expected imminently, so that, that should be here very soon. And SSP gave you a timeline at the last meeting of when to expect their limited design study.
I don't recall what that was.
Well, he said.
I don't have it committed to memory at this time.
Four to six weeks, right?
Four to six weeks. So you'll have Design Ideas Group imminently, which is, you know, probably within days, and you'll have the other one in about three weeks or so.
So, what?
Needs to be passed, the resolution. So. The SSP needs, needs the resolution passed in order for them to begin to work.
SSP needs a resolution in order to start the limited design study.
That was going to be my next question, was, so if we don't pass this document from them tonight to spend the $67,000, we won't have that.
Right, we won't get it.
So we won't, so we're, we won't expect, if we pass this tonight, we should expect a design between four to six weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
Which means we won't expect something until after the July meeting.
We're gonna, we'll push as hard as we can to get it sooner.
I'd be happy to amend my motion to take the timeline, to take the date out.
And just say within a certain amount of hours.
The whole conversation started by me asking, what are you expecting?
I thought I had the floor.
I'm sorry. Yeah, let her finish.
Okay, I thought she was done.
I was taking a breath, it's kind of hard to breathe. So I, I'm happy to amend the motion, since you seconded it, Peter. I don't know, I'm sorry to point at you, that's rude. I'm happy to amend and take the date out, but I still think the intent of what I'd like to do meets the, meets the intent of what the BGNT committee wants to do, as well as what my colleague here to my right, Ms. Siegel, would like to also see, so that we can, as a board, make this a single option.
Yeah, I think, I think the July date would probably work best, and if Ms. Gorsky's correct, then we can pressure them to get us the proposal faster. Because definitely time is of the essence. So maybe we can do that special meeting in July, and then our special BGNT.
I'm happy to take the timeline out completely, as long as we continue to move forward, and expeditiously, as soon as we have that.
Correct.
The design study, should we pass this this evening, we have that design study, then, then the board, the committee move forward, and then the board move forward.
Yeah, I think we need to put pressure on them for July, and that would work great.
But you're thinking of it before July, before the July BGNT meeting, because that's the third.
This is new information to me about this and the other piece. So that's why I want to remove the date, and we don't have, we won't, unless we pass this and call them tomorrow and say, go.
We're not gonna have that, right.
Four to six weeks, four to six weeks is, is gonna take us to pass the July meeting. So I, so I don't want to leave the date in there, because then that would just, it would be something that would not pass.
Okay.
And the rest of the board has an opportunity to just vote this whole thing down, and we can move forward.
Or not.
Or not. So, forward either way, you know, so that's, you know, that's totally, and then we just move on, because we still have other committee meetings, and we still haven't, you know, moved forward. I can't call the question on my own motion, so.
I know, so let, let, Mr. Flor.
Mr. Figliardi has something.
Oh, Mr. Figliardi.
Well, I, my respectful suggestion, because it's a friendly amendment between the mover and the seconder, is that Mr. Gorsky be given a chance to read to the board the motion that's actually on the floor, these changes, so that the board knows what's being considered.
Okay.
Ms. Belko, feel free to interject if anything here does not meet your satisfaction. But it is moved by Ms. Belko that administration is to try to expedite receipt of the limited design studies, both from SSP Architects and Design Ideas Group. And upon receipt of both limited design studies, it is further recommended that the board plan a two-hour Building Grounds Transportation Committee meeting to not only study both limited design studies, but all unhoused student issues. And it is anticipated that the Board of Education will have a special Board of Education meeting to discuss the fruits of the Building Grounds.
Immediately to follow the two-hour meeting.
The same night?
No, immediately, meaning within, you know.
Well, we gotta be clear with this gang, we gotta be real specific. So let's try doing that. But, Mr. Polari, let me ask you a question, and I, I beg your indulgence. What is it exactly that you think, and I'm saying this respectfully, that you think we should be asking in this initial position?
Madam President, my simple question to anybody in this room and the administration is, what would a limited study product look like?
Okay, I'm asking you to answer that, your question.
Oh, you asked me to look for it?
Tell us what you think a limited study product would entail.
What I think, fair enough, fair enough. What it would have is a conceptual plan layout of the Apple Garden site that shows the square footage of the area, parking areas, and it has a general idea of how many classrooms, how many other facilities, you know, whether it's restrooms, or labs, or what, what have you. And it will have a breakdown of cost that shows the base from earth leveling all the way to construction of the entire facility. So, and it will also have a schedule of from the starting to groundbreaking to the time the school can be open. Those are the three things that I would look for as a product, and that's not in that.
Well, there's five things. Conceptual plan.
Conceptual plan.
General idea of what?
General idea of what does this school consist of, how many classrooms, how many other auxiliary facilities, and the second thing I said was about the construction cost.
Breakdown of costs.
Breakdown of costs by phase, and then have an approximate schedule associated with that.
So wait a minute, so I believe that that is what the administration has been discussing with SSP. So let me have the administration.
Right.
Answer the question, because if that is what we believe and what you have discussed with SSP, then we can move this forward, we'll, we'll call the question, and then we will move the forward, the other thing. How about that?
That's perfect.
Thank you.
For the record, I, I did not have any conversations with SSP outside of the committee meeting, but, but at the last Building Grounds Transportation Committee meeting, it was just determined the scope of the school, being 1,200 students. Before that, you can't construct a limited design study, because you don't know how big or small. But now that we got the number 1,200, I believe materially speaking that all of the components of what you just mentioned is going to be included in the limited design study.
Well, my concern is that the consultant provided a scope of services letter with the fee on it, and he doesn't show those products as the final products he's gonna provide. So I'm saying, how do you control this guy? After he's done with spending $67,000, he give you a memo back saying that, I assume, 30 classrooms with this and this, and here is the cost estimate, and we think it's gonna take four years.
Just two seconds. That, that's where you might be at a disadvantage for not being at the committee meeting, because we did discuss in detail, now that we've defined the 1,200, that's going to go into the design of the school, the design of the cafeteria, the design of the core spaces are all commensurate with the number of students. So all of that will fall into line, that is a serious expectation of this report.
Then I would like to see that as a part of the scope of work.
I was gonna ask that question. If we, can we adjust what's on the agenda tonight to include that? And, and tell them that that, that is, that is how the board, that is how the board is going to agree to and approve this.
Do you mean to ask the architect for a supplement or an addendum, explaining in more detail what they included?
No, that, that part and parcel of what we approved tonight, that amount of money, is meant to include these things.
I'll be happy to write him a letter as soon as we get back to you.
Madam President, if I may, we can make a resolution suggesting it and get it over with right now.
I, I know.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'd say that we're approving this conditionally with these three parameters.
Fine.
Madam President.
But let's call, let's get, yes, let's get this other.
Mr. Gorsky, do we sign a contract with SSP?
We do not have a contract right now with SSP.
No, if we approve this tonight, will we get a contract from them stating that we're paying them for this?
Yes.
So in the contract, it won't state what we're looking for from them?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so we're wasting time.
And this would be included.
Yeah.
But let's get the, the resolution that is on the table, let's get it voted on, please. Mr. Gorsky, I'm sorry, could you read that again?
It is recommended by Ms. Bierman.
Nope, by Ms. Belko.
I beg your pardon, Ms. Belko. Beg your pardon. It was moved by Ms. Belko that administration expedite the limited design studies, both from Design Ideas Group and SSP, to be provided as soon as possible. And then it is further recommended that the Building Grounds Transportation Committee hold a two-hour meeting to study both of the limited design studies in, in receipt, and also study and strategize the total unhoused student issue. And it is further, it's further resolved that the Board of Education will have a special meeting to deliberate on the fruits of the Building Grounds Transportation Committee meeting. Sorry.
You're gonna remember all that?
Yes, because it's being taped.
Okay. Good, good point. Okay, and I just want to thank the public for being patient and persevere through this. We have been, you know, in the last 20 years, we have really had to struggle with this every month, every year. We are only responsible for housing our children. We are not responsible, unfortunately, for the amount of building that goes on. We are tasked to house our children and build these facilities. We have begged through referendums to get these things built, but sadly, we have no control over how, how much our enrollment increases year by year. So it is a very difficult, and everyone wants to house our children. So I just want to put that in perspective, and it's not that we're, it is not that we're confused, it's not that we don't understand what we need to do. What we're trying to do is make a referendum palatable and make our, and make our facilities safe for our children. And it takes, it takes all of us to communicate and to get these things straightened out. So we, with all sincerity and desire to do the right thing as quickly as possible, and this is what we're doing. This is not an argument, this is deliberation. You're entitled to listen to our deliberation, as either boring or frustrating as it might be. But it's necessary for us to try to formulate the best we can. We can't, we have not been able to get $150 million referendum passed, so we are trying in other ways to make it, to make accommodations for our children and make it palatable for our stakeholders, because unfortunately, we all bear the burden in a, in a very big way, because we don't even get so, so much state funding. So I thank you again, I won't belabor the point. Let's have a roll call. Are you satisfied, Ms. Belko, with that? Okay, please.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Ms. Kirby.
Yes.
Mr. Chirrell.
Yes.
Mr. Tifano.
Yes.
Mr. Polari.
No.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
No.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
On the word President motion passes.
Okay, so Mr. Tifano, do you have any others for your committee?
No, I, I was done.
You're done?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other committee that?
I have curriculum.
Go ahead, Ms. Belko.
So the Curriculum Committee met on June 9th, and we had several really interesting and good presentations given to us by, by our supervisors of Applied Arts, Mathematics, Language Arts, Guidance and Social Studies. There, we were presented the Honors World History Curriculum and the framework for that, for Social Studies. And the curriculum will focus on active citizenship in the 21st century, and also including a lot of virtual learning, and it meets all of the college career and civic life student learning standards for these, for Social Studies. They also will be covering things like Enlightenment, French Revolution, the Industrial Revolution, imperialism in Africa, imperialism in Asia, nationalism, World War I, the Russian Revolution, the rise of dictators, and the Holocaust. That, the next item that was, we were presented with was a new AP Chemistry Textbook Adoption, and through a rigorous review of different books and documents, the, the supervisors recommended the textbook Zoom Doll Chemistry AP Edition, publisher from Cenage Learning. The students will be, have interaction with knowledge platforms in a unique environment. The text also allows for a problem-solving structure. The text also allows for a problem-solving structure to enable the students to, I hit the wrong button, excuse me, I'm sorry, to enable the students to have good discussion and work with interactive examples. A lab manual is included with this, and it's a supplement for the teachers to use, and Zoom Doll is considered the gold standard for AP Chemistry books. Sixth and seventh grade social studies textbook adoption. The textbook is My World, Interactive World History, Early Ages. Published, both of those textbooks are published copyright in 2021, so they are new and fresh versions of the book. So, this particular book for Social Studies will allow the sixth and seventh grades to use the same book, and they'll be able to move forward with their curriculum using the same materials, which I think will benefit the learning of the students. The presentation states that there are guided questions. They'll learn additional geography skills. Academic and vocabulary are interweaved throughout the chapters. They will also have learning videos and teacher tools to enhance the instruction for the teachers. Application Development Curriculum Document, so they've updated the application development course that is offered here at the high school, and it is an advanced course designed for students who want to design applications for Android or I/O, or Apple. Students will learn basic application concepts to be able to build applications. They'll, they have a year-long type project that relies heavily on prior knowledge that they would learn in a previous taken course. And there's a lot of independent hands-on development and research, and the students are strongly emphasized to do studies beyond the course. So, there's a lot of interaction there. There is also an adaption, an adoption of the Middle School Mathematics and Accelerated Math textbook. Envision Mathematics covers math standards. Each lesson begins with exploratory activities. There's digital as well as print resources. There's also magnitude of practice, engaging electronic activities, and projects allows for differentiation, reteaching, and enrichment. One of the key points that was brought up by the committee when they presented this was that this was a melding of old math and new math, and it kind of will go over concepts and things like that, and then be able to bring in the new math as those of us who went to elementary school or middle school or in high school years ago, you know, they do things differently now. It can get, it makes us, it's hard to help, it's hard for us to help our kids, because the things are different. Imagine Learning Language Literacy Math Pilot for English Language Learners was presented by Dr. Rozell. It's a no-cost pilot that's being done that will, there'll be an assessment pre and post to see if this particular program will improve the English language learner's ability to comprehend what they're being taught. And then Dr. Lehman gave a presentation about graduation requirements and proposed amendments for the requirements for the class of 2023, 2024, and 2025. There is going to be a new graduation assessment inclusive of Algebra I and Geometry. And further updates, as Dr. Lehman gets them, will be presented to the board and to the committee moving forward. That's my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Anyone have a question? We're good on that one. Rupert, did you, you looked at me?
No, I'm good.
Okay, no, okay. Anyone else?
I have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You have two reports, right?
Yes, I will make these quick, as I know the public is waiting, and we should be getting to public forum as fast as possible. The Policy Committee met last Tuesday, June 8th. We discussed the restart recovery policy. We were discussing the mass exception, and it was discussed that the restart committee would be discussing this as well, as we heard Dr. Alvik's report. I would like to bring the policy back to next month's Policy Committee meeting to discuss adding some language in there that where it says inhibits an individual's health, that it could be determined by the individuals themselves or a parent or guardian. We touched on that, we didn't, we did not, the committee was not, we did not know what the restart committee was going to say, but based on what the restart committee met and discussed and wanted to put forward, I think we should discuss this back in policy. There are also several policies on the agenda tonight for second read. None of them had been revised after the first read, so they're on, under the superintendent's board action item tonight. And there were three policies that were changed and updated, revised by Strauss Esme that are on the policy report tonight for first reading. That is, oh, and there's one policy. The Federal Families First Corona Act Program is on the policies to be abolished tonight. And that is the Policy Committee update. Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, I'll go into the Community Engagement and Communication Committee. We had an update on the sponsorship program. Mr. Gorsky said that he had reached out to Thomas River, and we are looking to get their RFP to look at and discuss. However, we did not, the committee didn't discuss getting, it had previously discussed getting a business plan and a timeframe for when the district could start soliciting and accepting donations. So, time is of the essence. We have $100,000 budgeted that we failed to meet next, last year, so we really need to start putting together a program and a timeframe for when we're going to go out and start soliciting donations and sponsorships. We also discussed increasing revenue for building use. The building use has been on hold due to the pandemic. It was recommended by the committee to start advertising the building use policy. We had a lengthy discussion about how much money that the district could see as revenue from the extended, opening up the building use to more organizations for their use, because currently, prior to the pandemic, it was only, it was a very limited group that could use the building. So, the district has opened that up to further organizations and businesses. So, we should look at, that could be a real revenue source for us. We discussed public relations. I gave an update. I attended a public relations school board training. They shared ideas for increasing your public relations in your district. One of the big things that they stress, school boards, was that you should use social media to build goodwill in your community. If you're looking at doing any type of big projects, such as a referendum, you want to build goodwill in your community and get your community behind the school district. And the best way to do that, do that is to let them know what your school district is doing and promote your programs, your students, all your successes. And the best way to do that is through social media. So, they had several suggestions to increase that. We discussed, in order to do that, we discussed, Dr. Alvik was going to, I think, we have somebody in the district currently that does the Monroe Pulse, but you were going to look at possibly, I think, rewriting that job description for a communication facilitator. And that is my report.
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Skirby? Okay, seeing none. I think we'll go straight to the public forum. They've been waiting patiently. Can we have, you have?
Four minutes?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's four minutes. But, Mr. Gorsky, it's four minutes.
Four minutes?
Four minutes.
Okay, please say your name, your address, and you are welcome for four minutes.
Good evening, Betty Sabarito, to Barrymore Drive. I wanted to speak to the actual agenda. I did reach out to Madam President and Dr. Alvik and Dr. Lehman, but I thought it was important that the rest of the board hear this, and I want to read something first. The New Jersey Supreme Court affirmed that student records may not be disclosed even if personally identifiable information is redacted. A disclosure of such records would require a court order. The high court's decision clarifies that NJPRA provides enhanced protection to student records above and beyond the protections provided by federal law and gives guidance to school districts' records of custodians. And yet, when the board agenda came out, as you know, I am the CPAP leader, Special Education Parent Advisory Group leader, and I had three very upset parents. When the board agenda came out, we listed students' names and the reason for their home instruction. That is a clear violation of confidentiality. This could open us up to lawsuits, and so I have two questions. Where does the responsibility fall and how did this happen? And what steps are we taking to ensure that this does not happen again? Because while I have been very open about the story with my child, that is not every parent's case, and the law protects them, so I want to know what happened, because we have some very upset parents. And I would be too. That's it.
I think we let you answer first, and then Mr. Kegley Arden wants to add to that.
Yeah, unfortunately, it was human error that led to that, and I apologize profusely for it. It never should have happened. We have several people that review the agenda before it goes out. Ultimately, it's my, I review it prior to going out, but it was human error that that information was put out.
And so, we've taken steps so that it doesn't happen again, because some of these parents, rightfully so, are.
Agreed. It should not have happened.
Thank you.
Mr. Kegley Arden, I think maybe you should just, because it is a breach of regulation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the board takes issue with the notion that that information is protected by law and that it should not have happened. As you heard, the administration is taking steps to address it and to make sure it doesn't happen again. I'm not aware of any specific complaints from individual parents that have been made, but they need to be addressed if they are made, and I'll certainly assist the administration in doing so.
Thank you, Mr. Sab.
Prakash Purav, 33, do you mind, right? I need a quick answer to this. Apple God's requiring restart. Is Apple God's school system ventilation system is good to protect the children and all that?
Ms. Arminio, you want me to respond?
Yes, go ahead, please.
It is working. We also have, we also make sure that the air, that there is fresh air flow. So, that's where the windows are open in our schools, and the ducts for the system are open to whatever their maximum fresh air flow is. We also have MERV 13 filters in all of our schools.
So, it needs the same air quality of high school?
Yes.
Where we are, thank you very much. Second question. With governors, whatever plan, governors' emergency action will be over, so whatever he passed will no more valid. So, the school is going to follow the CDC guidelines? Or the New Jersey Department of Education is going to give us some guidance?
We, the way that we've always gone is, we have to follow what the New Jersey Department of Education gives us. So, when the CDC comes out with changes, it usually takes a couple of days up to a week, we found, before we get the guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education.
Okay. Because we don't want this politics of mask, no masking at all. Here is to protect the children and the community, okay? So, I don't want to see the New Jersey Department of Education giving vague guidance, like the CDC. Those who are vaccinated need not have to wear masks. Those who are not vaccinated will request you to wear masks. This is, you know, it is, these, these kind of policies from the government should be avoided. We don't want battle between the families here, okay? So, that is the request. And I'm seeing that, anyway, congratulations to the staff which is retiring. But do we have a plan to, I saw today on the agenda about another four teachers are retiring. Do we have planning place to recruit? And there are important teacher positions in math and different things, you know, even special education. What is the timeline when we are going to have full staff?
The plan is to have full staff by September.
Thank you, thank you.
That, we are currently interviewing all of the school, the school administration is interviewing, and I'm interviewing.
You've got the timeline, I'm fine, I'm fine. Because my time limit is four or five minutes here, that's right. Another one thing is, I went to the, I'm listening to the BGT meetings. I was so disappointed that the BGT is meeting, and the documents were not provided. And the entire BGT went nuts. The documents were supposed to be loaded seven days in advance, and they were not loaded. The guy is coming to presentation, and BGT doesn't have documents. If these kind of communications are not going well from the administration to Board of Education Committee meeting, it is not acceptable. And then, if you miss the timeline, you know, I have worked in corporations. If you miss that week, you cannot have it. You should have a meeting within another two weeks, not to wait for the next month, following month. I tell you one thing, if I see anything, communication is lagging, I'm going to go straight on Facebook, I'm going to come to the district office and sit there. This is not acceptable. And then the blame game start. I know the politics. Before the election, what I'm going to say, this boy didn't do anything. That is what is going to be played here.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
It's always hard to follow a lively discussion, as you just heard, and so many of, thank you for bringing it back down to earth in your summary. I think I was very bad with the public.
And tell us your name and address.
Steven Ryback, 23, Riviera Drive.
Hi, Mr. Ryback.
I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen, private board member, president. I'm speaking to support Dr. Alvik, Dr. Lehman, and Michael Gorsky. The success of this district and its academic achievements are, to a great degree, attributable to central administration. Of course, our teachers, building administrators, and support staff are the front lines and work directly with our children, but they depend on this administration with board support to have the tools necessary to do their jobs. Dr. Alvik is a wealth of knowledge, and I so enjoy talking to her about educational programs and ideas. The job of superintendent is very difficult, as you can't please everyone, and it's all encompassing. Guiding us through a pandemic must be a nightmare, but Dory Alvik is doing it with intelligence, ability to listen to others, leadership, and grace. During this pandemic, she has followed all CDC and state guidelines, even though some people may have been critical of them. Not doing so could result in lawsuits, as well as the district losing state aid or suffering some other consequence. I know some of that was dealt with this evening. Dr. Lehman moved into his position and made it a seamless transition. He's knowledgeable, accessible, dedicated, and does a great job. I often call Mike Gorsky the money man, because he has the knowledge and insight to help advise the team in making critical financial decisions. During my time on this Board of Education, Mike was invaluable and always available to answer my questions. He doesn't look at the clock, or even whether it's Saturday or Sunday. Monroe and his loyalty to it comes first. I seem to be focusing on Mike, because in the past, he's not received a yes vote from all board members. I remind you that your vote represents what he's done this year. With Mike at the helm of the business office, we've enjoyed 21 excellent audits. Our tax rate has been held to a minimum, thanks to this team and how well they work together. You might also consider your vote and its impact on the morale of employees. Their contracts have the approval of the county superintendent as well. All three of our administrators are admired and respected. Let's show them and the district how we appreciate their efforts and approve all their contracts and give good reviews as well. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Ryback.
Good evening. My name is Doug Poy, I live at Fort Tamarack Road. On the agenda tonight are items concerning the contracts for the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and the business administrator. And as you consider how you will vote on those contracts or evaluations of our district administrators, I urge you to keep in mind the need for continuity in these very important positions. Our superintendent, along with her assistant and the business administrator, have headed a reopening team that followed state and federal guidelines to assure that we had minimal, if any, transmission of the COVID virus between students or staff who were in the building. if any, transmission of the COVID virus between students or staff who were in the buildings. They secured grants to help offset the cost of managing the impact of the closures, and for that, our community should be thankful. These officials, in my opinion, deserve your support and a vote of confidence in the work that they are doing. With attentions turning to the need for improving or expanding our physical facilities, it is important that they are rewarded for the work that they have done and the, and the work that is yet to come. What message do you send when you approve only one contract or no contracts? Is one of these officials failing to do his or her job? Is one of them doing a better job than the other two? I think not. They have worked as a team, and that team has led this district through a very difficult period of time. I urge you to do the right thing for the district, which will be the right thing for our staff and our students. Thank you.
Mr. Poehl, I would just like to make one correction. Dr. Alvin's contract is not on the agenda, her, an evaluation is, Dr. Alvin has a contract that goes another three years. So her contract-
I'm aware of that.
Oh, but you mentioned-
But I am aware that you're going in a closed session to do evaluation-
Evaluation is different, right, than the contract.
That's why, yes. And I included that in my statement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Hi, Jeremy Marcus, 27, McFadden. So I came here tonight to talk about masks. A part of me dies every day after putting my masks, masks on my kids to go to school, right? The masks don't do anything. We all know this. Because the kids can go to restaurants, they can go to baseball games, they can go to Costco and Walmart, they can go to movie theaters, no masks. Everyone up here is hugging and kissing before the retirees, no Plexiglas. My 10-year-old spends his school day like this. He can't see, he can't read his teacher's lips. He can't read his teacher's lips. There was a study out of Gainesville today, I'm not sure if anybody saw, but I'll email it to you in the morning. These are freshly worn face masks, worn for five to eight hours or so. They were sent to the University of Florida for analysis. Eleven pathogens were found on the masks. Pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, there's a bunch of other things, food poisoning, something that causes Lyme disease, diphtheria, Legionnaires' disease. This is one day of masks. Do kids wash their masks every day? Mine put theirs in their backpacks. I never see them. But I'm busy running a business. So this is what we're doing to the kids. There's no science that states that masks are, none, because it would be everywhere. It would be on every news station, it would be on every school board meeting, everywhere. It doesn't exist. Masks do nothing. They are wet Petri dishes, the kids are getting sick from them. Mine has anxiety, one of mine has some anxiety and depression from it. Hates it, right? I have to therapist. The IEP thing, I had to get a lawyer to get his IEP adjusted. And even still then, I had to beg to get him in the building for five days and he couldn't do it. So, you know, we want a safe restart, I get it. This thing doesn't affect kids, and we should be really grateful that it doesn't. But we're still punishing them. I have no idea why. I don't know what the agenda is for Murphy, but it's got to end, and it has to end here. There are other districts around New Jersey who have made masks optional. Aberdeen did it tonight or yesterday, Holmville did it also. So maybe they have funding or don't have funding. I don't really know, but they said masks are optional, and that's how they should be. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. You want blue hair, you can have blue hair, you can pierce both of your ears, doesn't matter. I don't want my kids wearing masks. If you don't have a plan for virtual come September, you need to, because I'm not sending my kids to school wearing masks. And that's it. That's, that's really, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else in the, anyone else? Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Sarah Aziz, 31 Slade Drive. At a recent BGNT meeting, the architect said that the earliest that we could get a referendum out to vote was September 2022. I'm concerned that this special meeting of the BGNT committee could postpone that timeline and make it later than September 2022. Part of the reason this special meeting is necessary is because there hasn't been enough time in the regular BGNT meetings, because the BGNT committee has spent four meetings discussing the purchase of hypochloric acid equipment to home brew disinfectant at our schools. And this issue should have been closed in December, so we would have had more time to focus on our overcrowding problem. In December, environmental hygienist Dr. Lynch said that if we produce it in the, in the schools, it will, it will lack an EPA registration number. In spite of that, BGNT wasted January discussing this with a vendor, and the vendor just confirmed what Dr. Lynch said, that they don't have an EPA registration number, they were in the process of getting it, they said they don't have any clients that are New Jersey school districts. In spite of that, there were, there were three more meetings. There were three more meetings. And, and in a recent meeting, our facilities director had to waste time on the phone with the Department of Environmental Protection to discuss this issue, and he, and he confirmed that if we manufacture disinfectant in our schools, then our district will have to register as a pesticide manufacturer with the Department of Environmental Protection. So, I mean, this is four meetings in addition to the two meetings happened in December. In the meantime, we have Apple Garden falling apart, we have, you know, a serious overcrowding problem, and part of the reason that we have to have this extra meeting is because the time in the BGNT committee meetings prior was not used constructively. And it's now June, and I still have not seen evidence that the district has dropped this plan to purchase hypochloric acid and transform our public schools into a pesticide manufacturer. It wasn't on the agenda in June, but that doesn't mean it could come back. And I don't know if the Board is still considering this plan, if they still plan to waste more BGNT time on this issue at the expense of these other issues that we have. And I want to know from Dr. Alvin, are we still on track to have a referendum in September 2022?
Go ahead, Dr. Alvin.
The, I don't have the timeline in front of me, but I think we have to have a, was it July? Was it July? We have to have a plan from the Board on, in July in order to make the September 2022 referendum.
I thought something had to be approved today.
The, the design study had to be approved today-
Okay.
-so that we could have the design and have a plan for, for July.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
I'm just going to make one, a quick announcement about the hydrochloric acid has been, is, that discussion is over. So, at this, at, and if, if anything changes, we will bring it up, but you, you're done, you know, that's done.
It is? I didn't know that.
But, at this time. Anyone else from the public? Okay. I think, we will close, I'm sorry, no, Dr. Lehman, are you ready? We will close the public portion just by a voice vote. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody in favor? Thank you.
Would you like me to do my report?
Yes, please.
All right, sounds good. So I'm going to keep this brief. We've been recognizing many students throughout the district over the past week and a half or so, but before we get into a little bit more of that, I just wanted to start with an update, and this builds upon the report that Mr. Chiarella provided. The Governor signed Bill S. 3434 today. This bill extends eligibility to specific students that would otherwise age out of the school system at the age of 21. This applies to students this year, the students that would typically age out this school year, the 2021, 22 school year, as well as the 2022, 23 school year. It's something we've been monitoring. It was fast-tracked through the House and the Senate, and it's actually been sitting on the Governor's desk for a couple of weeks. So he took action on it today, and we're excited because many of the students that are impacted now will have additional time to further engage in transitional skills and job training that they need as they transition to adulthood. So we're excited to work with those families, work with those students as they transition and they turn 22. Also want to take a moment to congratulate all of our students who are moving up and graduating this year. You persevered through uncharted territory and succeeded. Our families should also be recognized. Whatever role you played in supporting our students, your children, I thank you very, very much this year. It was definitely not in our schedule, not in our plan 18 months ago to, to go through this. To all our staff, our teachers, our administrators, the support staff, everyone in the buildings, on the roads, and in between, I thank you as well. The end is in sight. We can see normalcy in the future. It's right, right out there. I can see it, it's coming. We will get there, just hang tight. The end is near, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lehman. Anybody have a question?
So just a quick question for clarification. So the, the bill that was signed by the Governor, so instead of kids aging out at 21, now they're aging out at what age?
They age out at 22 now.
So it's an extra year?
Yep. And it's for this school year and then the following two school years. So it would impact three graduating classes, three aging out classes.
Okay. And then what, it reverts back?
Then it goes back to 21, yes.
But it's-
Oh, so it's because of-
It's because of COVID. This is all related to COVID. Specifically, students, they wouldn't, they, we couldn't get students out in the community as much as we wanted to this year, and there's a lot of transitional activities that we, you know, we certainly virtualized, but we, we can now engage these students as they move through next year with us into more traditional activities that, that they need before they age out.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, Dr. Alvin?
Okay. So I also want to echo my thanks to the students, the parents, the staff, the administrators. This has definitely been an unprecedented year, but I think based on our meeting that we had Monday evening, our students and our staff have really persevered and, and have done some great things. This evening, we did recognize our staff members who are retiring, who retired or are retiring through September 1st. On the agenda tonight, we do have one additional staff member who is, who's, has stated that she is retiring as of September 30th. I want to thank Ms. Deborah Holtz, one of our bus drivers, for her 36 and a half years in Monroe Township, and I wish her a wonderful retirement. On your agenda this evening, you do have the enrollment information as of April 30th. As of today, we have 256 students attending the high school from Jamesburg. So with that, it's recommended that, that the Board approve Personnel Items A through DA.
So-
Any second? Do you have a second?
Second.
Rupa, Rupa Siegel, seconded. Any discussion, any questions for Dr. Alvin before we vote?
I just, I have a, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Dr. Alvin, I see with our evacuation drills, the lockdowns and things like that, and I, I do appreciate that you're, that we list these so that we know that they're going on. I'm just wondering how, how we do, you know, are we grading ourselves and how that, what the outcome is of those drills?
Yes, we, we usually do our drills in conjunction with our Monroe Township Police Department, so they will come in and give us kind of an overview. This year, our drills have been conducted differently because, and, and that's based on the guidance from the state. They didn't want us to conduct drills where, the whole idea of a drill is the muscle memory, get, so that you react like that when there's an emergency. The fire alarm goes off, you know what to do. A lockdown is called, you know what to do. So we haven't done actual lockdowns because we don't want to have any confusion, but we have gone through the process and the practice and the discussion. And we've also done other types of activities like tabletop discussions, where you have the administrators and the teams and the crisis teams in the schools sit down around a table and have discussions about the plan.
Right.
So they're just, they, they were just done differently this year. But they're, but we were still conducting them every month as required.
I like that, I wrote that down. Muscle memory, that's great.
Yeah, that, that's what they say all the time, because I, I know Mr. Pirro and I have attended many trainings, they, they do it every single month with the State of New Jersey of what their expectations are for that month.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, disturbing.
On CQ, the coaches, the coaches, I guess those are stipends. There seems to be a lot of disparity even amongst the different steps. How is that, because we didn't discuss this in Personnel, so how, how, how does the administration come up with the numbers?
It's based on the MTEA contract. So there's, there's three levels for each coach, and it depends on how many years' experience they have that they're on the coach. I do know that there's a couple of discrepancies and that we're working to, to try to figure out exactly which ones they should be on. I think with the change in leadership in that area, we, we want to, so there will be a couple of corrections in July, but it's based on their number of years as a coach in that, in that sport, and that's what bases them on which step they're on. The actual stipends are listed in the MTEA contract.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Gorski, roll call, please.
Personnel Items A through DA moved by Mr. Plori, seconded by Ms. Siegel. Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Biermann.
Yes, and I'll know on AJ.
Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Mr. Plori.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
No on AJ and no on AN. And, one sec. Table CX.
You asked to table CX?
Do you want to make a motion to table?
Yeah, motion to CX, table CX.
You make a motion to table CX? Okay, so that takes precedent?
That's for the non-affiliates.
Do you have to vote on tabling that?
Yes.
Yeah, we need a roll call for that.
Okay.
Right, that's a precedent?
Yes.
Takes precedent.
It's a priority motion to table.
Just, just want to confirm that these people are not going to lose their jobs.
That, that is, that is-
Because we were told in Personnel they're going to lose their jobs.
That, that is, I would like to clarify what we discussed in Personnel.
Okay.
A non-vote on any non-affiliated staff position, which is what you're recommending by tabling these, is essentially a pink slip and a termination for those employees. They have contracts through June 30th.
Can we confirm that?
Yes. Can I please have Mr. Gagliardi to speak to that? Can you give him, can you give him the mic, please?
So I'm, I'm assuming that the folks listed in AX fall into one of two categories-
CX, CX.
CX, I'm sorry. What, what page is that?
I have it on 47.
47.
Okay. All right, so CX, I see it, okay, so, all right, so there are quite a few employees there, but it doesn't, I don't think it changes what I was going to say in response to the, to the question for legal advice. My assumption is that all of these folks fall into one of two categories. They're, they're either tenured or non-tenured, right? There's no, they have to fall into one of two categories. Okay. So that, for those that are tenured, they have a job after June 30th. What we don't know, I guess, is what their level of compensation is going to be. Then for the folks who are non-tenured, but are, I guess there are three categories, right? Non-tenured fall into two categories, certificated and non-certificated. If they are non-tenured and certificated, you had to non-renew them by May 15th. Since you didn't non-renew them by May 15th, they automatically have a contract for next year, so those folks have employment. We don't know what we're going to pay them. Then there's the third category. The third category who are non-certificated and non-tenured may have job protection passed June 30th, depending on what their collective bargaining agreement says, but they're not covered by state law. So it is my assumption, I'll have to turn to the administration for this because I don't have the collective bargaining agreements here, it is very typical that the collective bargaining agreements contain the same language that I just described in statute for these folks who are non-certificated. That is to say, language that says they have to be told before May 15th if they don't have a contract. If they're not told, they do have a contract, in which case they do have a job, but we don't know what, what they're being paid. So unless I'm told that there's nothing in the collective bargaining agreement, it is my assumption that all three of the categories I just described to you continue their employment, but we don't know what they're going to be paid if you take no action this evening. But I need, I need to, I need you to tell me if the third category of employees are protected by their collective bargaining agreements. I know the first two are protected by state law.
Mr. Gagliardi, the majority of these in CX are, are non-affiliated staff members. The majority of these members in CX, to the best of my knowledge, are non-tenured employees. There are very few, I can count them on a couple fingers probably, that are certificated. So I would like the Board to understand the gravity of tabling CX, as this will bring this district ceased to a halt upon, upon- So I would like the board to understand the gravity of tabling CX, as this will bring this district ceased to a halt upon effectuation of this action. The operation of payroll, human benefits, secretaries, all staff and clerical staff that serve all aspects of this district, including special education, transportation, these folks will not have a job on 7-1, as they are majority non-tenured, non-certificated, non-affiliated staff. There are, the Falcon Care ECE programs are all non-tenured with the exception of no one. So this is a nuclear option that will have catastrophic effects on this district to cease operations. This was discussed at Personnel Committee, I'm not going to go into the details of that, but this moved out of Personnel Committee with the one exception, and that was the complaint to the process. To pull the rug out in this now and send all of these hardworking people here without a job on 7-1 is unconscionable, and I ask you to severely understand what you're doing here.
May I ask a question?
Please, Mr. Gagliardi.
Is it your intention to terminate any of these employees?
No.
Speak up, Mr..
Okay.
I said no.
No.
The question, as I understand it, is with the level of compensation with some of these individuals, is that right?
Exactly.
So it's not possible for me, sitting here, to ascertain how many of these people are protected based upon their, you know, some are affiliated, some are not affiliated, some have certificates, some don't have certificates. But given what you said your concern is, my recommendation is that you not pursue a tabling of the motion the way you did it, but to offer all of these folks a contract with the dollar amount to be determined, just like you have in a situation where you have a collective bargaining agreement, it expires, you're still negotiating. Those folks know they have a job, they know they're not going to be paid less in the following year, but how much they're going to be paid depends upon the finalization of a contract. If any of these folks are in the circumstance that the Board Secretary described, and you're not looking to terminate them, then don't terminate them. Offer them a contract with the amount to be determined, if the amount is really your concern, rather than the employment status of any of these people. What you do and who you pay what, public didn't elect me, they elected you, so I'm not trying to influence the discussion in any way. But if you're, it's not your intent to have any of these folks without a job on July 1, then respectfully, that's what the motion should be.
We have a table, unless Mr. Nikotinsky wants to amend it.
I mean, I don't like to have a gun to my head in Personnel and telling me that we have to approve these contracts at a certain rate or these people lose their jobs with no notice. That's the problem. We should have had these employees' contracts back in April or May, not five days before a meeting. That's the problem.
Madam?
Well, one second. How do, do we have to?
Well, we have, so, yeah, so we have a, we have a.
Can't have a discussion, we have to.
Right, so we have a procedural problem here, because if you withdraw the motion to table, this motion has, the vote on the motion's already begun, right? Several board members have already voted. So if you withdraw the motion to table, the vote will continue, and obviously, I don't know whether it's going to pass or not. But if it doesn't, if CX doesn't pass, then I'm going to recommend further action, like the sort of action I described. So there's no question that these folks have jobs, and you folks can discuss whatever you want about who gets paid what, and certainly, we can sort of ferret out who has certain entitlements, which is impossible for me to answer.
Could we discuss this in closed session tonight and then vote after the closed session?
These staff members have not been rice'd.
Well, right, we have at least two problems with that. The first is no one's been rice'd, and the second is you've started to vote on this motion already. So the motion to table is an up or down motion. And if the motion to table succeeds, you don't take a vote on this, but you can't discuss it in executive session, and my advice is that you do something with this tonight, given the fact that some of these people may not have job protections. I think a lot of them do, but I can't answer that as we sit here, nobody can.
So may I make a suggestion, Mr. Gagliardi, that if, under those circumstances, if the board votes no to table this, then we can have another discussion about how to proceed under Mr. Gagliardi's recommendation.
Right, I, given what you've heard from the administration, the meeting can't end tonight without us doing something about this, and we can't have an executive session discussion about the individuals that you have concerns about because they haven't been rice'd. And you don't have a meeting between now and July 1. So procedurally, I think the vote should continue. If the vote, if this passes and you want to walk through what a motion for reconsideration would look like, I can walk you through that, so that you're not sort of handicapped by the fact that you're raising this issue in the middle of the vote. But if the, if you do reconsider, my respectful suggestion is you take some action other than an up or down vote, but do something to preserve their employment status with deliberations over dollar amounts to follow. So I hope that's clear, in other words, if this, if you continue the roll call vote and this passes, but someone wants to reconsider, I'll walk you through how to do that correctly. But if you do reconsider, I'm also going to walk you through how not to leave the district in a shambles, where there are folks who may be without a job, when your goal is not to leave people without a job, but to have a discussion about salaries. I hope that's clear, Madam President.
It sounds clear to me.
Okay.
Mr. Gagliardi, we did not start voting on it, he just made a motion, that's it. What we're voting on is the items for the entire thing so far.
That's correct, that is correct.
Right.
So CX was part of the original motion, and several board members have already voted to pass it. So that's the procedural difficulty. So if the motion to table is withdrawn, the Board Secretary is going to continue the roll call vote. If this passes and folks want to reconsider it, I'll walk you through procedurally how to do that.
One second, let me understand that. Since it should have been tabled before the vote began?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the issue, it should have been tabled immediately when.
That's not the whole issue.
No, 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 no.
That's just a procedural issue.
We're talking about procedure here.
Right, the procedure is that the roll call vote on the motion has already started, so without the motion to table, the Board Secretary has to finish the vote.
All right.
And then if there's anything left to be done, we'll try to do it without treading on the rights of these individuals or the need of the district to function.
Okay, so what?
I don't know.
What are you going to say?
I.
Wait, no, I think we need to have the vote, and then if you, if we make a statement afterwards. If you're making a statement in, to appeal to this vote, I don't think it's appropriate at this time.
I think, you know, we have many, beg pardon.
So you're going to do it anyway.
We have many points of clarification here and correction of information. I think with the gravity of this, the board should fully understand what's at scope here.
I believe Mr. Gagliardi explained that, so I would.
But do you understand the scope of the employees and what departments this affects and the consequence that this would have on the organization? Because without that, you're voting blind on this resolution.
My advice is we can't let this go without their employment status being clear. So I, I hear you, and I, hopefully, my advice is clear. We can't leave the district in the position that you're saying it can't be left in.
And I just want to remind the committee, this came unanimously out of Personnel.
It did not.
With one objection to the process.
No, it didn't. It didn't.
No, unfortunately, that is incorrect information. So, Mr. Gagliardi, I think we should continue, now, we have to vote on the table or no? Because the vote began, does that preclude being able to table it?
So the motion to table, unless it's withdrawn by Mr. Nikotinsky, is subject to a board vote. My advice is that, given what Mr. Gorski has said, that you should not and cannot table this, but it doesn't mean that you're powerless to do anything. Let's see what happens with the roll call vote, and then, as I say, if someone wants to revisit this, I'll walk you through how to do that procedurally. But the correct procedural thing to do right now, with the roll call vote having started, Mr. Nikotinsky withdraws his motion to table, we have a vote, and then we'll see what one or more board members want to do if this thing passes.
Then I withdraw my tabling, that's fine.
All right, so I think you were voting, actually, right?
Yeah, so I'm going to vote no to CX.
Yeah, you're free to vote however you want, I'm not trying to influence the vote, I'm just saying the roll call has to continue.
Okay, so no to CX and yes to everything else, and no to AJ.
Madam, let me get my bearings, so Mr. Nikotinsky is now voting yes on everything, no on AJ, and no on AN.
And CX.
Oh, and AN, yes.
Pardon, I got AJ, AN.
And CX.
And CX. Okay. Mr. Chirella?
Yes, on everything except for AJ. On AJ, our attorney, our board attorney has advised me that I should recuse myself, so I'm going to do that. I don't think that I need to, but I do value his advice, and this will be the final time that I recuse myself on this matter.
So noted, Mr. Dofo?
Yes, on everything except AJ.
Where you vote how?
No, I'm sorry.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes, to all, but no to AJ.
Go ahead.
Madam President, I feel obligated to remind Ms. Skirby of legal advice that Mr. Chirella spoke of. Do you wish to still vote no on AJ, or do you wish to refuse?
I wish to vote no.
So it will be noted in a minute.
That's correct.
Mr. Tefana?
Yes, on all, no on AJ.
Ms. Arminia?
Yes, on all, no on AJ.
Madam President, everything in Personnel Item A through DA has passed, with the exception.
You didn't have me, I'm a yes for everything.
And did Mr.?
He voted first.
Oh, I was, okay, it feels like it was so long ago, sorry.
Well, it was.
It was.
So, Madam President, everything in motion Personnel Item A through DA has passed, with the exception of AJ, which did not do.
Okay, Mr. Gagliardi, do you want to address the concern that Mr. Nikotinsky had?
So, right, so CX has passed.
Passed.
So these folks have contracts and they have salaries. I don't know if there's any questions or any other issues board members have with regard to CX. So you've heard enough from me on that, apparently.
Well, I think the issue was that through Personnel, there were questions as to the ability of the Personnel to freely discuss it because the material information was not presented. We were told that people would lose their jobs, and then you say that that could have possibly happened, but.
For some, maybe, again, I don't know everybody on this list and what their status is. For some, maybe, for others, certainly not.
And New Jersey School Boards also attested to the fact that in a Personnel, that in a Personnel Committee, that is when the discussion of salaries and things should, maybe you can address that a little bit more eloquently than me.
I don't know about that, but the idea, of course, and we talked tonight about the lack of Rice notices and the way that sort of ties your hands in terms of saying, let's hold this, have an executive session discussion and come back. But they haven't been rice'd. Well, the Rice notice requirement, which is, comes from a Supreme Court case, Rice versus Union County Regional, which requires you to notify an employee if you're going to have an executive session discussion that may touch upon the status of their employment, which of course, getting a contract and having a salary clearly touches on the status of your employment. Which is why those discussions typically take place in the Personnel Committee, where there can be a free discussion, it's not in public, the Rice requirement doesn't apply. You can look at evaluations if you're concerned about whether or not someone deserves the raise that's being recommended. So that this is certainly the subject of a Personnel Committee discussion, so that by the time it comes before the board, it's got the recommendation of the administration, it's been reviewed and endorsed by the Personnel Committee, and then you don't have the sort of awkwardness we have here because of the rights of the individuals involved and the contractual obligations. So that is typically the way this is handled. Obviously, I have no idea how things were handled here over the past few weeks, but it certainly puts the board in a difficult position because you can't necessarily get the information you want and have the discussion you want because of the way a board has to operate as opposed to a committee.
Mr. Nikotinsky, if you want to explain again without, explain procedurally, but within the committee and what the objection of the Personnel Committee was, essentially, in a procedural.
So we had no say in negotiations in the rates, we were told this is it, and this is what you got to vote on, and that's it.
In other words, there was.
There was no process.
So the objection is essentially.
And everyone gets the same percentage rate.
Another person, may I object and add clarification tonight?
I think we all heard the same, right? Karen heard the same thing?
Madam, I heard something completely different, I heard.
Let me, let me ask Ms. Bierman to speak, she was in the committee, she was part of the committee. Go closer to your mic.
This was not part of the agenda for the committee, it came to us just during the meeting.
And we didn't even get the non-affiliate paperwork, I had to request it, and they were emailed to us, it wasn't even on the agenda.
Let Ms. Bierman speak, though, she had the floor.
So it felt like there had maybe been a pattern of this non-affiliate process of just tagging on to other data that's used in the district for supplying raises, and that it was just a given that this is the list, this is what we do every year, blah, 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 it'll be on the agenda. And those of us that were new, or those of us that were not comfortable with that process, we were made to feel that these people would lose their jobs if we just did not let this fly through. We were without legal representation during Personnel Committee, so we had to, you know, depend on trying to get some of that information after the fact, where it sounded like maybe this was not the case, I still think we don't have clarity on that. We did leave Personnel saying that we were not happy with the process of how this all came about and that we would somewhere along the line address the process, but I was not under the impression that we just had to accept those numbers, or that that conversation should have continued during Personnel Committee.
When I spoke to school boards, again, to try to clarify the process, I was told that, yes, it is appropriate for the Personnel Committee to have a discussion with the administration prior to presentation of this. And I understand from my years here that it has not been the case that the procedures have been followed in that way. That the board has a right, because we are actually the hiring governing body, to at least give an idea to the administration how to proceed with, not to micromanage, not to dictate, but at least to have an idea, because it's taxpayers' money that we would have to approve, an idea of where the administration felt the negotiation should be. We could, apparently, we could not be in these individual negotiations, which I think everybody on the committee was satisfied with, we understood that. But the committee should be, and the board should be respected enough to be at least discussed, have these things discussed, and get an idea of where the board feels we could go with these procedures, so.
Madam President?
Yes.
Let me then make a suggestion, if that's really the issue.
Yeah.
Rather than revisiting CX and dealing with issues that may be disruptive to the district, just as you did with BGNT, where the board established a timeline that it felt was satisfactory, my assumption, and I'll defer to the superintendent, but my assumption is that the annual evaluations for folks in this group are done by the end of April. So, again, rather than revisit this this evening, the board could simply pass a resolution that says it would want these recommendations presented to the Personnel Committee at its May meeting. The board would establish that as the guiding principle, their evaluations are done, so the administration's in a position.
Pardon me? May 15th.
Before May.
Before May 15th.
Before May 15th is their evaluations.
Okay, so I'm trying to establish a time.
Mr. Pelari.
Quick question, Madam President.
Use your mic a little closer.
Maybe you know the answer to this, but I thought we had a negotiation with all these folks that you, Rupa, and I were involved in and we agreed on a certain percentage, not these folks?
Not the same people. And actually, you reminded me of something. The information given in the Personnel Committee was not entirely factual about the extent of the other negotiations, so I'm not gonna discuss that here, but I'll bring it to the Personnel Committee. So, information needs to be accurate, it needs to be timely, and it needs to be respectful of the process. I think that's, Mr. Nikotinsky or somebody else in the... I think that's the only request that we have.
Just a question. So with all these evaluations for next May, is the Personnel Committee gonna review all the evaluations?
No.
Before deciding on how to give these said raises across the Board?
No.
No?
No, it was a matter of consideration that even school board says it is appropriate for the discussion to occur prior to being told you have no choice and nothing's gonna change and you're gonna force people to...
I refuse to be a rubber stamp, so...
Same here.
Madam President?
Yes.
You know, without giving any of the specifics of confidentiality breaching that which would happen if you go too much into the Personnel Committee and discussion of these non-affiliates, I will remind the committee and contest some of the discussion before that the Superintendent of Schools is the chief school administrator responsible for all personnel. She has satisfied herself and made the recommendation to the Board for these people based upon recommendations for all of these non-affiliated staffs from their directors and immediate supervisors. These groups of individuals are not in a collective bargaining unit, they stand alone. They're 100% merit-based and they are the most underpaid people in this district. They are the ones who run Falcon Care and ECE to a $600,000 profit that this Board has harvested each year to the general fund. And I think that this action tonight and this discussion has caused catastrophic harm to the morale of these individuals if that's of any interest to this Board. Ms. Mitresak was honored tonight as a retiree. It's a good thing she did because had she not, she would've had the rug pulled out from under her tonight and left without a job. That's how serious and wild this action is.
Well, then I would ask and maintain that as important as all of our employees are to us and we are not individualizing the employees, what would be the harm of respectfully giving this information prior to May 15th to the Board and Personnel to at least review? It's a part of the process that has not been done or maintained for many years and it's...
It's a free-for-all, that's what it is.
Madam, as we said in Personnel too, and I'll conclude with this...
So, Mr. Gorski, I think you're conflating the issue. You're blaming the Board for singling out or disrespecting our employees. That is not the issue here. We are not talking about that. We never wanted anyone to lose a job or have any problem. We respect and honor our people, but we also feel that the Board is responsible for the payment of salaries and these are taxpayers' funds that we should be apprised of before we make an approval. To say you have, this has been going on for years, to say you have no choice, you have to do this, there's nothing... It's so inappropriate and school boards even made that very clear to me because before any, anything was said, I tried to get information. So it has not... So please do not make mention of the insult to the employees because that, and I'm making it very clear, that has nothing to do with it. Ms. Skirby, I apologize.
Yes, as a member of the Personnel Committee, I would like to say that there was no discussion of any individual person. It was a discussion of the process and the lack of us getting information to deliberate on that. It had nothing to do with individual employees. No individual employees were singled out, it was about the process. And I think, Madam President, what you said in that meeting was 100% accurate. We are given a job to do to approve this and without any type of deliberation, without getting any information and being a rubber stamp, we are held accountable by the taxpayers. So when, you know, the taxpayers see this and question the district administration, it gets turned back on the Board. Well, the Board did that, you know, and if you want us to make informed decisions for the taxpayers and be accountable, then we do need to have all the information. We can't just simply be given something like Mr. Nikotinsky said, it was not even given to us. We had to sit and wait to receive emails to open up the documents during the meeting and told, "You don't have a choice. You don't have a choice or these people will lose their jobs." If anybody lost their job, it would not be on the Board, it would be on the administration's failure to do what school board said was best practices. That has not been being done. It had nothing to do with individual employees.
Mr. Gagliardi, I think you'll have the last say on this and then we'll move on.
Mr. Arminio, can I make a statement? The reason that it wasn't sent to the Board in May was because the evaluation process had not concluded by the time that the May committee meetings were. So when, next year, when we approve a calendar for our Board meetings and our committee meetings, we need to make sure that the May committee meeting and the May Board meeting are later than May 15th so that we can then bring the list to the Board at the May meeting so that they have the opportunity to review it.
And I really appreciate that reasoning, but that was not given to us at the meeting. And someone once said...
I did share that at the meeting.
No.
I did share that at the meeting.
That is... You never mentioned May 15th.
No. Someone asked me about the evaluation date, absolutely.
That was never mentioned.
It was mentioned.
The Personnel meeting was in June, we still did not have any documents.
It was on the agenda though. You're right, you didn't have the document, but it was on the agenda.
The non-affiliates were not on the agenda.
The non-affiliates were on the agenda.
I requested it and then you had to email us.
The non-affiliate item was on the agenda, you didn't have the document.
Right, we had no documents.
Right, but it was on the agenda.
So we have to talk about something that doesn't exist.
That's fine. Mr. Pelari has his hands raised, please.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion that moving forward, the administration puts together the salary evaluations and recommendations prior to May 15th. Can we please move on?
Second.
Second? Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Mr. Pelari, could you repeat that motion?
I make a motion to request the administration to put together the compensation package for the following year by no later than May 15th of that year.
And it was moved by Mr. Pelari, seconded by who?
Mr. Chiarelli.
Mr. Chiarelli. Do you want to vote?
I, yes, and I think what we'll do is we will revise our policies as well. Go ahead, Mr. Pelari.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Pelari.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarelli.
Yes.
Ms. Beerman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to Board Action. It's recommended that the Board approve the Board Action Items A through M, as in Mary.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm thinking, are you moving the motion in a second?
Mr. Chiarelli and Ms. Skirby.
Shall I take a vote?
Does anybody have anything? No.
Mr. Chiarelli.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Ms. Beerman.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to Board Action. It's recommended that the Board approve the Board Action Items A through M, as in Mary.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm thinking, are you moving the motion in a second?
Mr. Chiarelli and Ms. Skirby.
Shall I take a vote?
Does anybody have anything? No.
Mr. Chiarelli.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Ms. Beerman.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Board Action Items A through M has passed.
That concludes my report.
Mr. Gorski, I believe you are next.
Just one second, please. Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through PP be approved by consent roll call with the exception of OO, which I am going to read as a separate resolution per the recommendation of the Board President.
So moved.
Okay, so if anybody gets that, we're gonna vote separately on OO. Yes. Do we have a second first? Mr. Chiarelli, who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Mr. Pelari, go ahead, Mr. Tofano.
Mr. Gorski, on double M, did we not discuss that we weren't gonna go ahead with that until we knew the due dates of the new iPads?
What we had discussed, Mr. Tofano, is that the auction date would be deferred until after we received the new units.
Right, because it doesn't say that.
But we can still go ahead with this action, but the auction date, which is not part of the resolution, will be deferred.
Okay.
May I say something?
Go ahead, yes, Mr. Chiarelli.
I had even, during the Finance Committee, I had even asked for clarification on that because I wanted to make sure that we didn't have that dated and so that we could, we would still be within the, you know, have our ability to auction these afterward and keep the ones we needed.
Maybe we should put a date on there or...
No, we can't put a date on there. We can't put a date on it because we don't know when we're gonna... We're worried about receiving the new ones. So if we put a date certain and we haven't received the new ones, then we're gonna have nothing.
Gotcha.
So I think it's understood and it's, will be in the minutes that we will... When we get the new ones, then we will certainly auction them.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's great, that was a good answer. Because actually, our technology director said that usually, once this motion passes, they go right into cleaning and preparing them for auction and they're not gonna do that this time, right?
Yes.
We're ready, that's clear.
Yes, we're ready for a roll call?
Yes. Anybody else? No, Ms. Beerman.
Just have a question on PP. Was that recommended by the BGNT Committee about accepting the proposal from Sal Electric on the baseball field electricity?
No.
Yeah, we didn't vote to accept that.
One second, go ahead.
PP was recommended by the Building Grounds Transportation Committee after presentation by Mr. Tofano about the issue with the electricity line being severed underground that feeds the scoreboard. And it was determined that there is a break in the electrical line and I asked if it would please the Committee, "Would you like Mr. Take to solicit a quote for this?" And I will put a resolution on for the Board meeting for the Board to deliberate on it. And the answer was affirm yes by the Committee.
Yes.
So that's why it's on here tonight.
Yes, we wanted a quote, well, we wanted several quotes, but this, according to this, we're going with the $19,000 quote.
$16,000.
$16,000.
$16,000.
So we didn't see any options.
I think that the scope of work is being underappreciated here to dig up the earth in a trench to find the break in this line and repair it. That is the majority of this repair, as I understand it.
Well, I could appreciate that, but we might find somebody who has a lower price for that scope of work and I think that needs to be explored before we just hand out 16 grand.
I believe this was the architect of record, that's why Mr. Take solicited the quote, not architect.
Electrician.
Electrician of record.
We also wanted to explore getting some donations for, you know, advertising on the field and, you know, maybe a local electrician wanted to do that.
Yes.
Before we ran out and spent the 16,000. So I think this has to be amended somehow tonight.
Madam President, may I elaborate on those other two that were actions have been taken?
No, we had a discussion this afternoon where you claimed that Mr. Take solicited electricians. Could you explain that? Is that, that's the case, right?
What had happened here is in an effort to solicit an licensed insured electrician who might be willing to donate their time and materials to repair this broken line and also whatever items are in the quotation, Mr. Take contacted the International Brotherhood of Teamsters who cover the electricians in this and they solicited their organization if there was be anybody willing to do this. We have not had any response yet. I also posted on our district website a solicitation for a licensed, insured electrician to contact me if they're willing to donate their time and materials to execute this action. Again, I have had no response back yet. So then the default was to get the job done and put this on for Board deliberation, which is why you're seeing it tonight, because those other two options did not come to fruition.
You could always vote it down. I mean, if you don't think it's, you're ready for that.
I'm tabled, I'm gonna have to email too.
Mr. ... I'm sorry, Mr. Nikotinsky? No?
Let's table it for now, let's table it tonight.
You wanna table it?
Yeah, and then we'll bring it up next month.
No need to table, I will amend the motion to make it A through PP with the exception of OO and PP, and I will read OO into record. Is that satisfying, Board?
Yeah. It works, unless people want...
No, no.
You're okay? Everybody okay? All right, let's move on.
Okay, so this is a vote on...
Are we having questions or we're done?
No, go ahead, that's what I asked.
Oh, I didn't have a question on that, I don't...
Ask on something else, go right ahead.
Sorry. So I was just curious, I love Letter V, the agreement with Princeton University, the recovery program for, I guess, furniture. How often do we use that or does it come in handy? Do we get, you know, usable stuff?
Yes, we have received significant donations of furniture from that, which is why we're doing it again. That was a recommendation from the facility director who uncovered this somehow.
Nice, very nice, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chiarelli.
On G, the virtual workshop.
I'm sorry, wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Tofano.
No, thank you.
Are you done? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
G, virtual workshop. Will those still be virtual by October based upon what's going on?
Okay.
Answer's yes.
I know that sometimes J&amp;J offers surplus furniture as well, maybe somebody can look into that.
As a matter of fact, we already have, we received years ago a material donation of used office equipment that was of very high quality from Janssen, which is a subdivision of J&amp;J.
Right, yeah, I know that they're very, they're very happy to do that on a regular... So maybe if we could thank them for their previous donations and ask them if they have anything else. Yep, keep it, keep it going. Anyone else? Shall we have a roll call, please?
Yes ma'am. Again, this is A through PP with the exception of OO and double P. OO will be read into record separately. Mr. Nikotinsky, how do you vote, sir?
No on 16, 17, 18, 19, and 22 for A.
16, 17, 18...
19 and 22.
Yes on everything else, I assume.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pelari.
Yes on everything and I recuse on G, isn't George?
Recuse on G, thank you. Mr. Chiarelli.
Yes on everything, but I have to recuse myself on NN.
Recuse on NN, so noted. Ms. Skirby.
Under A, no to 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20 and yes to the rest.
16, 17, 18, 19, and 20?
Yes.
Point of clarification, Mr. Nikotinsky, you voted no on 16, 17, 18, 19, and 22, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes, but recusing on letter G.
Recuse on G, thank you. Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion passes, and now I would like to read a revised OO. And, uh, Madam President?
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm making this up as I'm, I'm going along with, uh, with some handwritten notes, so if anything here is not pleasing to you or the Board, simply, uh, let me know and I'll revise the motion.
Okay.
As recommended by the Building Rounds Transportation Committee, it is further recommended that the previously submitted scope of services and fee proposal prepared by SSP Architects for limited design study of a potential new twelve-hundred student school at Applegarth School's site be approved by the Members of the Board of Education. Be it further resolved that the fee for the limited design study is sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator hereby authorized to take all necessary steps to execute this directive of the Board, including to have included in the limited design study the following. Number one, site conditions report. Number two, analysis of fatal flaws with the site. Number three, floor plans with options. Number four, type of construction with options and cost effective. Not sure if I understand that.
Cost effectiveness.
Cost effectiveness, got it. Site design layout including all facilities. Breakdown of cost by activity with contingencies called out. Timeline from completion of limited design study to construction, start to completion of construction. Final report, conceptual plans, cost estimate, and schedule up to two presentations to the Board, and if I didn't use the word, it, it is, it is preferred that these items be included in the limited design study. I would like to incorporate that in there, because to hold up the limited design study, because one of these might be not be able to be effectuated, uh, would be really against the spirit of what we heard earlier in the meeting about its expeditiousness.
I, I think, yes, but the problem is, uh, one, can I see that for a second? Is there? Where is it that talks about all, all facilities? You're talking about all facilities, all the other facilities in Ta-
All the facilities within that building.
Within that building?
Yeah. This is all applies only to Applegarth.
Okay. So, do you want preferred? Because they could say no to all of that.
The Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator hereby directed to take all necessary steps to execute this directive of the Board, including the Board's preference that the following are included in a limited design study.
Madam President, if I may, I, I, I suggest you put that in. My biggest concern is, I know you answered yes to Mr. Tofano's question that you were going to have a contract, right? The contract is going to include this letter as a, an attachment, so I want to make sure we spell out what we're expecting from them. That's all we're trying to do here.
And my goal is just to make this happen and not handicap the, uh-
Is that okay? Okay. Yes?
Yes. No, I'm, I, I, I think that that's reasonable, and, um, most of that is already in the, a letter of proposal for this.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. As long as the Board-
And it's for the same price?
Yes, of course.
Same price, yes.
Yeah, the price is specific.
Not to increase the sixty-seven to get five hundred.
Right.
Correct.
And before-
I think we, I think we should also add in there that you would like that within four weeks. That's, uh, a, a big priority.
I don't think they can do it, uh, now, as extensive.
We wait for design studies in February, we don't even have it still.
They said four to six weeks, so they'd have to do it at a minute, at their maximum speed.
Well, I think-
That's what we need.
That's understood.
Okay.
If we want to get into that, that referendum deadline, we need to have this within four.
We are all on the same page there, we will go full tilt to get this in as soon as possible. Like I said, the, uh, the Design Ideas Group is, is imminently expected, that could be tomorrow, or it could be in a couple of days. The other one, from SSP, he quoted-
Yeah.
About four weeks, and we're gonna, we're gonna push it.
And you know what? Okay, let's get that done. Let's, let's, let's vote on that one. And then I just have a statement about the other.
I think you're gonna add what Mr. Tofano is suggesting as, because everything is preferred anyway, so you, you put in four weeks.
Uh, that is not part of the resolution, no.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's administration telling you we're gonna do our best to get it done in that time. The, the more conditions you put in this resolution, the more likely it is to failure and not being able to be executed. So, I don't know what the intent is here, but, you know, we would like to get these studies and get them in as soon as possible, so you can get the cost estimates and make a decision on what to do. So, uh, this is OO, as I, as I've revised. Mr. Gagliardi, are you satisfied with the, that resolution?
Yes, sir.
And the motion was moved by?
Andy Plori.
Andy Plori, and seconded by?
I'll second.
Ken Chiarella. Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Plori?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
OO passes as revised. And, and, uh, madam, that concludes my report for the evening.
Sorry, everyone, thank you, Mr. Gorski. Okay, so what do we have on the agenda next? My report, and I am going to, uh, skip that for tonight, um, I think I've spoken enough today, and everybody knows, I just, will just congratulate all the students, um, by the next meeting, we, the, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-one school year will be completed, so I congratulate everybody and reiterate that, uh, the Board is respectful and appreciative of all of our staff, and thank you to the parents for their perseverance and endurance. And of course, I would like to thank the Board. The Board has been very, very strong and very good, um, and, and we're really trying to spend a lot of time to do the right thing for our kids. It doesn't always, uh, look smooth and, uh, pretty and glamorous, but it's, uh, I want to thank the Board for the time they've put in for, and they'll, since January, there's been a lot more time, uh, for this. But, anyway, congratulations to all of the students for their, uh, classroom efforts this year. That's it. I said I wasn't gonna have one. Other Board business. Uh, Mr. Tofano?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, uh, ask, what is the status of the, um, request for the state legislators to, to come and meet with us?
Yes, I, I-
About the fair funding and the-
Got, gotcha.
The donor impact fees and all that other good stuff.
Uh, Dr. Alvin, I have, I've talked about it, we have, and, and that, I'll take, I'll take on that responsibility, there are other things that, um, we were really going through, so.
Because this was X for a few-
I gotcha.
A lot of months ago.
I understand, I will work on that for the summer months. Thank you. And I apologize for not getting it done, but there were a lot of things I think we, that took precedence. Mr. Chiarella?
I just, I want to thank our retirees, uh, you know, for their service, and we, we had some, some of our, some of our employees with some great longevity there. What did I hear, thirty-seven years for, for one, for one of the people? So I just want to thank them for their service and let them know that we value them, and, and, uh, and it's just, that's an amazing run. Uh, you don't, you don't hear about that anymore, people staying anywhere that long, and so, uh, that's a, that's a major milestone even to, or a major achievement. So, I think that, that speaks to the District as well as to their perseverance, but I just wanted to thank the Board for service. Thanks.
Mr. Plori?
Madam President, I want to complain that Ken Chiarella is looking at my notes and he's making comments. That's the first thing I wrote here. Though, I think there are thirty-seven years of service, and, you know, some of these folks are truly trailblazers in setting this up, and they, he's absolutely right that we don't see more than ten years in any firm these days, so that's number one. Number two is, the outdoor concept you talked about, you know, that was so wonderful just to sit out in a lounge chair and, and watch it, I know some of the other members were, of the Board were there as well. I wish we publicized this a little bit more, maybe more folks would have, uh, joined us. I dealt with, uh, Ms. Palmer, uh, for my daughter's, uh, uh, music lessons and things like that, and she has been wonderful, I'm sad to see her depart, uh, but good luck to her. And the graduation middle school, I know some of the Board members were there too, it was very well done, and it looks like we're beginning to get back to normal. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Ms. Siegel?
Yeah, so I wanted to thank, um, Dr. Higgins and the High School Administration for putting on a phenomenal junior prom. It was really amazing, and the feedback I'm hearing from a lot of the parents and students is, it was just so nice to, A, see everyone together, but it was a nice event. I think the kids were unsure a little bit what it would be like outside, but it turned out amazing, so I do want to thank the High School, Dr. Higgins, and the Administration for really putting on a nice event. And then the other thing is, I want to thank Dr. Alvik, Dr. Lehman, and Mr. Gorski, uh, for constantly being able to steer the ship in this changing environment. I know sometimes things may not be as favorable, and, you know, you're constantly moving things around and being able to flip the District as you need to, to make sure that learning continues for our students, but always keeping in mind that safety and security come first. So I do thank you for all your efforts, and we are very fortunate as a school district to have such a strong administration. So, thank you.
Ms. Skirby?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to echo what some of the Board members said, and congratulate our retirees. Um, one in particular, um, I know is going to be, uh, missed greatly at Applegarth. Uh, Mrs. Hills was an amazing, amazing fourth grade teacher. Um, my daughter had the pleasure of having her, and I can say she was, um, a teacher that had made such an impression on the, her students, um, that they never forget her. So I wish her all the best in everything she does, um, and, you know, just thank her for all the service she did to, gave to this, this, this District. And congratulations to all of the, the retirees. And, yes, the middle school graduation, um, we did attend yesterday, and it was, um, a great feeling to have everybody in the building, inside, with their parents there, um, the students able to walk and get their, um, certificates, so I, I think it was a great, um, show of us getting somewhat back to normal and, and getting these kids back into the buildings to do things they do. Just one thing I want to say, um, as we move forward into September, um, just to make sure that there is, uh, continuity across the District with, um, events that are taking place, um, the schools should all have, follow the same type of protocols and should all be, um, open to following the same procedures. So if there's, um, an event being taking place inside and another school wants to do it, they should all be allowed to be inside, the one building shouldn't require that students have their event outside and, and allow students in another building to be inside. So, we just really need to make sure that we're following the same procedures and allowing the same stuff across the District and not having different protocols for different schools. That's all.
Yes, Ms. Belko?
I just want to, um, congratulate all of the middle schoolers who, um, were promoted to high school, yeah, uh, this, yesterday, was that yesterday? I'm, I apologize for not being there, but I think that, um, they deserve, they're coming into the high school, I know it can be a, a crazy thing, I had four do that, so, um, and then also, I wish to congratulate all the graduates who are graduating on Monday, I will not be in attendance, I have a, other, another obligation, but I do want to gra, congratulate them, um, and the teachers, and the Administration. Honestly, this has been an incredible year with, you know, starting, and, you know, the last two years, I had three graduate in twenty-twenty, and that was an interesting thing to happen, and, um, this year, I'm glad that they'll be able to go back to the Cure Arena and have, uh, their graduation with the pomp and circumstance and, and things that happened, um, previously. And also, the retirees, I just have to say I'm jealous. I'm just jealous.
Anyone else? Um, let me, yes, let me mention, the, uh, uh, middle school graduation was lovely, it was, um, moving, it was long, because there are six hundred and thirty students coming into the, um, high school, so we really do have to try to move forward and house our students. They were all very lovely, they were mature, it was a great ceremony, and the teachers did a good job. And we have some very, very, uh, good students coming and, uh, enthusiastic students, so I'm, I'm delighted that they'll be in our high school next year. Uh, let me give a public service announcement. Tomorrow, seventeenth of June, I keep mentioning how, uh, we are tasked with housing students, but we have no choice about, uh, the construction. So tomorrow, June seventeenth, uh, please look at the Township website, I don't, I, I printed it out, but I, apparently, I didn't put it in my, uh, briefcase. Uh, June seventeenth, they're going to be discussing a master plan, I think it's actually an open house, Mr. Master Plan, is that correct? Councilman DePiero, do you know where that is gonna be? Senior Center, okay, tomorrow, Senior Center, please check out the, um, Township website. Also, on the twenty-first, now that's going to be our graduation, but there's also going to be a discussion about the affordable housing and the type of, and all of the construction. Unfortunately, I was not able to get to, uh, the municipality, um, and ask for that, but I encourage everyone who's concerned about housing our students to go to these, um, and, and speak out and participate, and let them know that we have a lot of children to, uh, build schools for. Okay, that's it. Anybody else? Nope, okay. We have another public forum, if someone wants to come to, um, you know what? How, can, just by show of hands, how many, because they've been waiting, go ahead if you have to go. How many, uh, in the public will be speaking? We wanted to take a break, so. You sure? Just two? No, no, go ahead, you've been waiting. Go ahead.
Just two? You promise you'll only use four minutes?
I won't be long, maybe four minutes.
Come on. Please state your name and, and, and your address, please.
Tim Maslow, two Allison Court. I first want to congratulate all the teachers, um, students graduated. Of course, we forgot our lacrosse team, uh, they made the state finals, lost, but a great game. Uh, I also want to, most importantly, applaud this board. What a wonderful job you're doing. Today, you represented the people that voted for you, the people that trust you. Tonight, you showed the residents of Monroe that there is transparency and there's hope to fight corruption, okay? And fight for transparency. It was really nice to see. I know I'm getting a little emotional about it, but a lot of people say, you know, why do we vote against AJ? I'm gonna tell you why I voted against AJ. I got papers in my hand right here. He's our state, three state upheld ethics violations against our business administrator. He was running a business through our office at the Board of Education.
Madam President, I want to remind the Speaker about slander, um, and, and how far over the line that he's going.
Point of order. It's all Oprah. I, oh, I apologize, I apologize. If any resident wants to see it, you're more than welcome to Oprah. A lot of people had, have, have had a systemic issue with our business administrator in getting Oprah's and getting transparency. But tonight, this board, this elected board showed the residents of Monroe that there is transparency. And I couldn't be more pleased. I couldn't be more pleased. I looked on that screen tonight, and I saw hardworking people, people that come to work every day and grind it up, janitors, mechanical engineers, or mechanics rather, engineers, people that are not making two hundred and five thousand dollars a year, people that can only afford to work one job at work. One job. Guys making fifty thousand a year, that's not a lot of money. Two hundred and five thousand dollars a year is a lot of money. That's a lot of money. But transparency here tonight gives me belief, gives me hope, gives me hope that, you know what, transparency's out there. There are, everyone with the exception of three members on this board, okay, voted the right thing tonight, they voted transparency. And the people that voted yes to AJ should be ashamed of themselves, they should be frowned upon. They should be frowned upon. We have council candidates here on the Democratic side. We have a Democratic organization chair here who voted yes to someone who has three state upheld ethics violations. Three. They should be ashamed of themselves. Two hundred and five thousand dollars a year, people losing their jobs. They're losing their jobs. That's all I gotta say.
Is there anyone else? Please.
Is it okay if I speak without the mic?
Yes, please do, sir.
It's a little hard for me to talk with it on. Michael Olesky, Fifty Mayberry Avenue here in Monroe, and, uh, I just wanted maybe to ask a couple of follow-up questions regarding the, uh, SSP, SSP proposal and what's yet to come at the, maybe next BGNT meeting. Uh, you know, I listened very carefully, and it took a while for me to kind of ju- digest it all, but apparently it sounds like, I guess, what's to come now is, the BGNT committee, of course, is gonna put together a proposal for consideration by the entire board, uh, with regard to what plan, yeah, overall plan should be considered for, yeah, the referendum. And, yeah, I wanted to ask, BGNT committee, yeah, I know who the members are of the Board of Education, uh, but I'm wondering, the administrators that actually go to that meeting, are they in fact members of the BGNT too? Or are they just, uh, observers?
We, we are not members of the committee, but we provide technical assistance to the members of the committee.
Yep. So, yeah, there's a need to take a vote, I guess you folks would not vote then.
Correct.
Uh, committees don't vote, Mr. Olesky. We, we make recommendations to the full board.
I see.
So we take a consensus, if you will, but that doesn't mean everybody's approval with the majority of people, and then we, we bring it to the board, which was to Ms. Siegel's point. Um, but hopefully, and I know you, well, I don't want to take up your time. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, yeah, understood. Yeah, 'cause I just wanted to make it, yeah, at least get it clear in my mind, so it's the intention of the group, in fact, the group that's here today, yeah, that the BGNT plus the administration's gonna work together on putting a plan together, yeah, for presentation to the board and not the, the BGNT exclusively X the administration.
Right.
Correct.
So, gonna be working together, right? Okay. Um, and I guess maybe one further question I wanted to ask, if, yeah, whether it's me or anybody in the public has got any comments, suggestions, ideas, uh, who might we send it to? Uh, to the entire BGNT, yeah, committee?
You could send it to the full board, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, you could send it to the full. We want to keep everybody abreast of everything as much as possible. Sometimes the committees are, you know, the, the nature of the committees are supposed to be to sort of focus in and narrow the scope, but, uh, again, that may be open to a discussion in the future and just not have committees anymore and just have committee of the whole, so everybody's always in the loop.
Okay. One last comment, yeah, again, in the same vein. Yeah, I'm gonna say this as nicely as I can, yeah, but I guess up until now, you know, it's been district administration, and it's been, what, carrying the ball, you might say, with, with regard to referendum planning. And I see a little change in direction right now, where now the BGNT committee is gonna be carrying the ball, right?
Well, I, I'm just gonna speak for myself. Mr. Tofano can speak for, as the chair, but I would hope that, I mean, we, we still have to live with the recommendations of the administration, but we hope that the administration would collaborate with the board so we can move things along.
Correct, and that's my hope too, that that's exactly what's gonna happen.
So we know, right.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that's three.
Sarah Aziz, three long slot drive.
Go ahead.
Uh, I do hope the public does a review of the Oprah documents that were, um, shown here regarding Mr. Gorski's, um, uh, and the investigation that the School Ethics Commission did, uh, regarding the allegations that he was running a tax business outside, out of the BOE office. The School Ethics Commer- Commission determined that he was guilty of three inadvertent code violations, which they, they determined were of such a minor nature that they gave him a reprimand, which was the lowest level of penalty. If he was indeed running a tax business out of the BOE office, they would have decertificated him. They would have made it impossible for him to work here, and they chose not to do that. A few years ago, I, um, I remember reading on social media, a lot of outrage about how much he gets paid, and, and the question was asked, why do we pay him thirty thousand dollars more than the South Brunswick BA? So then I did the research, and I made a list of all the BAs in Middlesex County, and I ranked them by salary, and he wasn't the highest paid. He was like the third or fourth highest paid. And then I checked his credentials against the credentials of the other BAs, and the other BAs had a lot less experience, they didn't have a CPA license, they didn't have a public school accountant license, and, and in addition to all these credentials, Mr. Gorski's also a qualified purchasing agent. So that, there, there, and he has twenty years of experience, and so that, that is the reason why he was getting paid so much more than the South Brunswick business administrator, business administrator. So the question is, are we getting our money's worth? Well, the fact is Monroe Township has the second lowest taxes of all of Middlesex County, and we get a fraction of the state aid that South Brunswick and Edison, all these other places get, and in spite of that, we have lower taxes. The reason why our taxes are the second lowest in Middlesex County is because we have very smart and qualified people managing our money. Our administrative team delivered this board an excellent budget. It was a budget that included huge investments in our education, including special education, and, and, and it included a school tax decrease. And so the people who voted for, against Mr. Gorski's budget are the same people who wanted to, to waste our money on hypochlorous acid equipment, they wanted to transform our school into a pesticide manufacturer, until, until the administration stood up to them and said, no, we don't want to do this, and that's why the plan got dropped. The same people who voted against his contract also wanted to eliminate, uh, attorney review from the Oprah process and subject our town to lawsuits. So these are the money wasters, and they, and the vote against his contract was a vote against fiscal responsibility. It was a, is a way of punishing someone who's helping us keep our taxes low, and it should be condemned by all taxpayers who value truth, fairness, and fiscal responsibility.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, sorry about that. We had two people who.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Adam Elias. I, residence ninety-three Old Church Road, Monroe Township, New Jersey. I wanted to just make a point about the funding of the school formula. I had heard, this is my first time actually sitting through an entire Board of Education meeting, there are some great things tonight. I also did hear at one point, Mr. Tofano had asked about when we're gonna get the legislators to come into the Board of Education meeting to discuss the funding of, uh, our state budget. Right now, we have zero dollars in equalization aid coming into Monroe Township. Put that in perspective, Jamesburg has a million dollars coming in in equalization funding, East Brunswick has about twenty-two million coming in, Trenton has a hundred eighty million, and I think Newark just broke a billion dollars for the first time this year. There are nineteen, I believe, twenty maybe, adult communities in Monroe Township footing the bill for the school aid without any kind of equalization aid coming in from the state. Uh, we're trying to build another school on Applegarth Road. The school's expanding. Uh, I see people moving into Monroe. It's one of the most hotly demanded, uh, markets in New Jersey right now, so the schools are only gonna get more and more populated. So when I hear comments like, you know, that was just not, didn't have the precedence to get the legislators here to talk about the budget, that's not really our priority at the moment, it is the ultimate priority, to get more funding for this district, to get more funding for Monroe Township to accomplish the goals that it needs to accomplish. So I would just, as a resident, as a private citizen, as a parent of two daughters, I want to see that some legislators come in here and are held accountable for the lack of funding in Monroe Township. It is the biggest municipality in Middlesex County, it is going to eventually be the most populated, uh, municipality in Middlesex County, and I would really like to see the Board of Education in Monroe Township make a priority out of increasing the funding for the schools here in Monroe Township. Thank you.
Anyone else? We are certainly gonna take a break then. Um, just a, um, voice vote to close the public portion, seeing no, someone, no one else? Okay, we're good. Um, we are going to close the public portion, and then we're going to take a five-minute, do you want to take, just go?
Yeah, we can go on the way.
Okay. So we are gonna be going into closed session. Let me read that. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter two thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, NJSA ten four dash six through ten four dash twenty-one, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, and bullying, discussion for board council position, and superintendent, it was very, a very short superintendent evaluation. We will not be discussing, um, the evaluation with Dr. Alvik this evening. Uh, we still have some paperwork that has to be taken care of. Uh, following the closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as a need for confidentiality no longer exists. Do you think we'll be taking action on the HIB?
No, that'll be on next month.
We don't believe we'll be taking action on the HIB. Um, I, we may be taking action on the board couns-, uh, board, um, council position, uh, and we will not be taking action on the superintendent evaluation this evening. I can't tell you how long we're going to be. I suspect the minimum of a half hour before we go into closed session, we can all take a break. Um, can I have a motion? Mr. Chiarella and Mr. Polari? So we're closing the public, uh, we're, uh, going into closed session. Okay, we're back in, uh, public session?
I remember recording.
Uh, we will have a resolution to extend the contract with Porzio Firm. It has more than one name. Hold on.
Bronberg and Newman.
Can you give us the ni- can you give us the spelling of that, Nancy?
Wait, see, Porzio, Bronberg, and Newman.
Extending their contract from July first, twenty twenty-one, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. I have a motion.
Second.
Second.